Good evening, welcome to the March 27th North Idaho College Board Meeting. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Board. We do have a quorum this evening. If I could ask trustee Dunlap to read the mission statement.
Let me pull that up.
Okay.
Just a second. Alright. The mission for North Idaho College is that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities. It serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. Board, have you all had an opportunity to review the minutes? If you have, are there any changes or will accept them as written? Hearing no changes, we will accept the minutes. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment, so we're going to go straight into celebrating success. Our Common Read Diversity Council, I'd like to introduce Dr. Lita Burns.
Trustee and Chair Wood and members of the Board, it is really my pleasure to be able to introduce this, celebrating success this evening. I would tell you that the faculty and staff have worked diligently over the last several years to increase the awareness and the respect for diversity on the NIC campus. Our Diversity Council and other committees have used a variety of venues to educate our community and to provide experiences which help expand the depth and breadth of understanding related diversity issues. I believe motivation for this work comes from the desire to create a culture that is safe, welcoming, and open to multiple ways of thinking. This work also serves to meet one of our core values and core themes. It is my pleasure to introduce to you two of our outstanding leaders, Brian Sagwin and Tracy Struble. They will present to you some of the activities and accomplishments of NIC's work in diversity. Brian?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Thank you Chair Wood, members of the Board, members of the President's Cabinet. We're allowing myself and my colleague, Associate Professor of Communications Tracy Struble, to share with you the accomplishments of our council in support of diversity at North Idaho College. As Dr. Burns said, my name is Brian Sagwin, and I support and contribute to the success of our campus community in my role as Public Services Collection Development Librarian, as well as serving as Chair of the Cardinal Reads Committee. So, over the next 15 minutes, we'll give you a quick overview. I will try to be quick, I'll use my auctioneer voice, and look at the purpose, process, and goals of Diversity Council, as well as talk about each subgroup of the council that has been doing to help forward our mission. I recently saw a video of myself presenting, and with no audio, and my hands were going wild like a magician from Vegas. So, if you see that, maybe Brian over here could just whistle Europe's final countdown, and then I would know to lower my hands, alright? Okay, let's jump into it, get started. So, the Diversity Council, these are the goals of the group. So, in an effort to ensure diversity, maintains a central role at North Idaho College. The Diversity Council was established as a standing committee. The Diversity Council exists to oversee and support diversity initiatives campus-wide. The mission of the council is to promote cultural competence and to develop global and cultural awareness among faculty, staff, and students campus-wide. The council supports diversity awareness with the goal of fostering a campus climate that is safe, inclusive, supports diverse populations, particularly underrepresented and marginalized groups, and promotes equality, ethical responsibility, and social justice. The Diversity Council strives to meet each of the following outcomes to accomplish three main goals of the council, which are listed there. So, the diversity theme selected for 2018-20 is cultural identity. The Common Read that was selected in support of that was shared with you, which was Tribe on Homecoming and Belonging. Cultural identity directly connects to diversity by creating a campus-wide initiative to provide education concerning the structural causes of discrimination and overall social inequality supports and understanding of diverse populations. So, the NIC student population and larger community of North Idaho benefit from understanding a variety of cultural perspectives and underrepresented populations. So, this gives you an idea of all of these subgroups that are kind of a component of the Diversity Council. So, we're going to jump into each of these. The first being the American Indian Studies Program and Student Alliance. As you can see, there's a flyer for the Round Dance, which is coming up April 13th, 1 to 5 on a Saturday. So, the AIST 250 program was recently launched. That's the American Indian Sovereignty and Federal Policy course. It provides a critical overview of American Indian sovereignty as it relates to citizenry, history, governance, cultural, ideology, tribal case law practices, literature, tribal law, and land and water rights. The course will focus on cultural and political relationships of indigenous communities and the United States by drawing upon decolonization methods and critical race theories, with an emphasis on issues and American Indian experience. So, this course was launched, I think the first semester was in the fall, with Dr. Begay, and this is a component also of the American Indian Studies Academic Certificate that will be launched. It will serve and benefit anyone in professions already working in the fields of education, governance, resource management, health, social services, law, and deal with American Indian history, culture, communities, and enterprises on one level or another. So, this certificate is something that the program is offering to the community to help them come up to speed, to support those diversity initiatives for the NIC program, as well as a professional development opportunity as well. So, it's a 15-credit-hour certificate, and Dr. Begay has been doing a lot of outreach, trying to get folks involved with that, and helping to connect with some of our more diverse populations in the community. So, go ahead. And the Student Alliance, it's comprised of active Native and non-Native students, provide support and leadership opportunities, impart skills that help support lifelong learning. And one of the big programs that they put on is the Round Dance. So, that's part of American Indian Heritage Week, which has been taking place for 11 years. So, the 2018 Round Dance, they did an assessment after that program. We had 315 attendees. 99 individuals filled out feedback forms. So, 46% of those individuals had never attended an NIC event prior to the Round Dance. So, that's some nice exposure to the college as well as that event. 78% improved cultural awareness. They felt that improved their cultural awareness, my apologies. And 95% felt a sense of cultural inclusion. So, those are really great numbers, and I partook in that event and will be at the upcoming one. It's a lot of fun. It has a really nice spirit, and saw many people from the community, kids from my daughter's elementary school, participating in that. So, it's been a very successful event. Moving on to Buddhist talks. So, this is the venerable, I'm going to try to attempt to pronounce this correctly, Venerable Tuptin Chudrin, Abbot of the Shvrasthi Abbey. So, this event is taking place on Tuesday, April 2nd. The Abbey has been speaking at NIC since 2010. As you can see, we get really great turnout for those events. The highest attended was 220 individuals, and it tends to be pretty evenly split between community members as well as students. And she always works with the Abbey to pair that with a common theme. So, they'll develop a new one each semester. And generally, those events kind of end up talking about, going back to, "We all do seek happiness in our lives, and we want to suffer less" in relation to those diversity themes. I'm going to bounce back here real quick. So, these are put together by Associate Professor Laura Templeman. And the most recent one, as I mentioned, is going to be April 2nd, and it's going to be themed with Venerable Tuptin Kanyi will be speaking in this Abbey's place, and they are pretty interchangeable. They both are quite personable, funny, and eloquent. So, if you have not attended one of those, I would recommend you come and experience it. Okay, on to the Cardinal Reads. We're going to do a quick overview. The Cardinal Reads Program is a first-year college experience, and it is, sorry, I'm skipping ahead. It promotes and enhances literacy and critical thinking in two- to four-year schools while simultaneously building community and discussion around a shared experience. There are currently over 450 academic institutions that have instituted a Common Read program. In the last check, we were the only two-year school in Idaho with a Common Read program, so kudos to us. Our Common Read program was established in 2014 by an ad hoc group of faculty and staff. It became a standing committee in 2017. Willsted Library has purchased and made available copies of the Common Read for each cycle. This program has so many people to thank that I've ended up just putting names down at the bottom. So, it's like a ticker. And this group is really great. I came to NIC in 2016, and for me, it's been a really great way to build community, to get to know others and collaborate with them. So, I'm really glad to have found this group. And over that time, I've witnessed tremendous growth in the group's vision and reach, and moving from roundtable film sessions to a lecture series in 2017 that featured a lot of guest speakers from the area counties and communities, which is something that we look to do more of in the upcoming years. So, these are the 2014-16, 2016-18 Common Reads. Some of these might be familiar to you if you've read those. The common theme below that is listed. And as I mentioned, we started a lecture series. Initially, it was just roundtables for each year. We transitioned into a lecture series. We had themes for each of those that sort of dovetailed with a discipline on campus. So, I've listed some of those. I would say the one that we had a lot of engagement with was the Justice System Panel, and that included Clark Peterson, who's a magistrate judge for Cootney County, as well as retired magistrate judge Eugene Morano. And we've had individuals from the community Spokane area, as well as our own faculty contributing to that. So, we had eight events, 314 attendees. The breakdown of students, staff, and faculty are listed there. And I think we've seen a lot of success building off of that coming into the next year, which is the present. So, with our new Common Read Tribe, we've launched a couple INTR courses. The first was put together by Associate Professor Philosophy Laura Templeman, who I mentioned, who's associated with the Buddhist talks. And then Gerard Mathis in music had started INTR this semester as well. And with that is sort of the hope that we continue to get other disciplines building off of this. And in support of that, we've had individuals in the committee, specifically Catherine Tansky in eLearning, who built a Shell course in Canvas that has all of the foundational components in there. So, an instructor can just grab that, take that Shell course, and then build it out in any direction that they want. We also put together a research guide that faculty can use that touch on a lot of the themes in the Common Read, specifically the themes of homecoming, belonging, PTSD, isolation, those aspects. And we've also built up the website as well. So, this year, we've had five events. We've had 222 attendees. We have one more event that will be taking place, associated with the Diversity Symposium, and that's a breakdown of the students. So, what I did, you can't see it really well, but in red, we have four community members. So, again, that's an area that we're looking at, trying to engage with even more, and associated with the lecture series is going to really focus on that. The other aspect of that is we've been recording those sessions. We have a lot of people contact us and say, "I can't make that," or "I would really love to use that in my class." So, Andy Finney, who is here tonight, has been a really great partner. He has recorded those sessions for us. Catherine Tansky's uploaded them, made them accessible by creating a transcript and audio readback. So, those are ADA compliance. And those have been uploaded to YouTube. So, they're on the Cardinal Reads website for anybody to access NIC community or public. So, we're trying to create more accessibility on multiple platforms, and those have been loaded onto Canvas as well, so we can start tracking data and who's using those. Lastly, so moving forward, we are looking to engage with the lecture series, our community. We're going to be soliciting nominations for the 2020-22 Common Read in April. So, the new common theme is going to be Common Ground: Science, Technology, and Society. So, again, we're looking at trying to maybe break out of the social sciences and pull in some of those other disciplines who haven't engaged with the Read as much in the past. And then, once we get those nominations by mid-April, we'll go through and score those, and then hopefully narrow it down to three or four books that we'll read over the summer, and then make our selection in the fall of '19. So, if you want more information on that, you can follow us over at nic.edu/cardnallreads. But I also wanted to give a big thank you to the people on the bottom there, Michelle Lippert, Catherine Tansky, Kathleen Miller-Green, Holly Edwards. They have been with this committee, Michelle Lippert, Kathleen, and Holly, since the beginning. They've put in a ton of work. I can't thank them enough. They've done excellent work. So, they receive all of the recognition and applause. And Catherine is a new addition, but has put in a ton of work into this committee too, which requires a lot of work. It's almost a second job of sorts, but we really love it and feel like it's making a difference here. Alright. Now, I'll turn it over to my colleague Tracy to tell you about Day of Dialogue.
Okay, so thank you. Briefly, just to highlight what we do at Day of Dialogue, is Day of Dialogue is a celebration for women in the month of March to celebrate Women's History Month here at NIC. So, to give you a little bit of background, this started in 2014. I was working with the American Association of Women Community Colleges, National Board still. And so, in our Communication Department, we were discussing about having a celebration for women and to connect with internal and external community members. So, as progressive as NIC is, which we are, they decided to move forward with this, and so we created a Day of Dialogue Committee that actually outreach beyond our department and also collaborated with the Diversity Council. So, that's when we had our first Day of Dialogue. So, then we say, "What is that about?" Well, Day of Dialogue has two purposes. The first purpose is to make sure that we bring themes and current ideas that women are speaking of in our community and nationally, and really, truly have some dialogue about that. And so, we discuss the themes that are going on, and then we decide what leaders could speak to those areas. And so, as you see here, is just a collage of several of the women that we've had. So, we've had Sandy Patano. We've had leaders from our Cootney, Pam Thompson, excuse me, Stephanie Noble-Biens, who actually was speaking at the, she was the keynote speaker for the Martin Luther King Day in Spokane, and she does a lot of work in the community. And then also, this year, we had Paulette Jordan. So, we also have usually a large panel of women speaking, so we can have diversity of thought about different ideas. So, with that being said, we don't want to just speak about women's current issues. We also want to move people to engage in the community and say, "How do we get involved?" So, we always specifically talk about a purposeful takeaway and what we need to do for that reason. So, even when we work with the speakers, let's dialogue, but move people forward. The second portion is we want to honor women that actually are paving a way and making access for women to make change in the community. And so, as you can see here, we've highlighted briefly the awards that we have. And so, they're Women Leader of the Year Awards for our Day of Dialogue. And so, we take nominations, and we have a rubric system, and many people go through that system and pick the winners. And so, we have a student, which is wonderful. We have an employee, and then we have an alumna and a community member, because again, we're outreach to the community as the community college here in our area. So, just to highlight this year's winners, we are very excited. I'm really excited about Gwendolyn Chadwick was our automotive NIC student, female winner. And then we had Dr. Lita Burns as our employee award, because she's definitely had a lot of nominations supporting how she supports women in our community. And then Miki Stevenen, who won the alumna award, and then Elizabeth Mathis, who won the community award. And she's worked with autism within our community. So, we are very excited that we get to do this. So, what's next for the Day of Dialogue? Oh, excuse me. There we go. So, what's next? Well, this is our seventh year next year, so we hope you all can come, because as we always promote, we need to have diversity of thought. So, we love having everybody, men and women, everyone, and discussing what we need to celebrate. And this is the Centennial Women's Right to Vote this next year. So, definitely, we will be celebrating that piece. And then also, we will be talking again about what are themes that are coming up, because as we know, communication and its dynamic and changes in our culture, what people are speaking to, so we'll be talking about that. And then looking at also how we bring in community leaders. So, that's a little bit about the Day of Dialogue that we wanted to share with you. And so, we hope you'll come. It's always in March, and we'll make sure we send an invite to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And I had the opportunity to attend that with my wife, and it was awesome. It was probably one of the best events that I've attended here on campus. We just both talked after we left how upbeat and inspired we felt. So, it was a lot of fun. So, I encourage you to come next year. Diversity Symposium. So, what is cultural diversity? So, again, this relates to the common theme. So, this is a culminating event at the end of the academic year. The Diversity Symposium was started in 2016, as you see there, to highlight the common theme. Associate Professor Laura Templeman and Assistant Professor Joson Lean have worked hard developing the Fourth Annual Diversity Symposium that'll take place right here in the Student Union Building. This all-day event features various sessions hosted by experts with the intent on bringing awareness to specific diversity issues. The symposium reaches out to students NIC and the wider community to both present and attend in an effort to develop cultural competence, increase global awareness, and support social justice and ethical responsibility. It offers a safe forum to discuss and experience the sometimes difficult diversity issues in a productive way. So, our speaker, featured speaker, that we were able to secure, or they were able to secure via foundation grants, is Daniella Zalkman. She's an internationally-known photojournalist. She was featured in National Geographic recently, and she will be here to lead that event. So, past themes, as you can see, are listed there, and again, those overlap with the common theme. But that proves to be a really fun event, all-day event. Again, Cardinal Reads will be participating in that as well with Dr. Kim Richards and students from the Salish School of Spokane. So, we're looking forward to that. And I will throw it back to Tracy.
Briefly, we wanted to share, one of the additions that we have, starting last year, is a diversity award. So, we wanted to highlight, again, more of how we, you know, everything that we're doing here with the Diversity Council, including the Day of Dialogue and everything, has inspiration, hopefully, but depth to it. And part of it is the diversity award. We have a criteria that people can nominate, and we have a staff, an employee, and a student. And so, we started this last year to really highlight not only honoring people that actually are perpetuating and focusing on how to create diversity within your work. We wanted to share that with people. So, last year, again, our winners were Dr. Lita Burns, Michelle Lippert, who is a faculty winner, and then Renee Miller, who was a student. And we actually have a video, a very brief video on the Diversity Website page of our NIC Diversity Council website that highlights, because again, when we did this, we want to make sure we highlight what they're doing. How are they implementing diversity and helping perpetuate this on our campus as far as understanding what diversity is and having diversity of thought? So, we just wanted to highlight that that actually is happening this year, and we will highlight them at the Human Rights Banquet in April, and also at the end of the year is the commencement when they actually receive their wonderful award. And so, this year, we have Alan Lamb, who won for the Behavioral and Social Sciences Division Chair, Catherine Tansky, the Instructional Designer for eLearning, and then Edwin Amador, who is an international student who really has gotten involved in our campus and really promoted change and awareness for diversity. And now, I'm going to pass it back to Brian DeClos.
And we're almost done, folks. We're almost done. These are other participants that will be here for the Diversity Symposium, some featured groups. And again, that takes place on the 16th of April. So, lastly, looking at goals for the council moving forward. In the fall of 2017, it was established that NIC has a strong base of diversity in the curriculum within all of our GEM 5 and 6 courses, linking key state-mandated competencies to diversity. So, sort of jumping from that, based on that linkage, the school is currently in the process of developing an instrument to be piloted in the spring for measuring diversity in GEM 5 and 6 curriculum. So, that's something that's happening, that's diversity-related. There's also an INTR Diversity Certificate in development. A proposal on that, I think, is happening within the next month. We are also very excited, Tracy and myself, to be participating in the IDI Seminar in Portland, Oregon on May 15th and 17th. We have two other colleagues that are going to be joining us, Evelyn Melting-Tallow, who is overseeing the Round Dance. She's the advisor for American Indian students on campus, and I believe Kyle will be joining us as well in that too. So, the IDI Seminar is an intercultural development inventory. It's a cross-cultural assessment tool of intercultural competencies that is used by individuals and organizations to build intercultural competence to achieve, say, five times fast, diversity and inclusion goals and outcomes. And basically, the takeaway from that is that diversity feels understood and valued within the community or workplace. So, that can be in a broader community, like a campus community, or aspects that relate just to the workplace. So, PDP and PD funds from HR were applied for and approved by attendees. So, we're really looking forward to taking that information and applying it in the fall to our campus. And hopefully, we'll be able to measure cultural competence on our campus, so when we create events, they will align with the competencies of our community here on campus, and hopefully better connect. I also want to mention that we're working hard on bringing author Tommy Orange to campus next month. He is a very notable author right now. He was noted by New York Times. His book, There/There, was listed as a number, top 10 book for 2018. And this really overlaps really nicely with cultural identity and the urban American Indian perspective. This is a work of fiction that really resonates. Both Dr. Begay and myself, we've both read this book and enjoyed it immensely. So, we're hoping maybe in the next few days to have word on whether or not we'll be able to secure him, to have him on campus in late April. So, once we do that, we'll share information. And lastly, I just want to say another thank you to Nancy Edwards. She's Student Services Senior Administrative Assistant. And Chris Pfeifer, Communications and Marketing Web Designer Coordinator, for their continued service and support of the Diversity Council. And that's it. Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have questions for me?
Thank you, Brian. And Teresa, Board comments? Go ahead.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Tracy, I'm sorry.
We televise these meetings, and so we'd like to get as much mileage out of your presentation as we can.
Oh, sure.
And you had mentioned the Diversity Symposium, but we don't have a And you had mentioned the Diversity Symposium, but we don't have a date for that. Do you have a date for it yet?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll back it up. It's April 16th. So Tuesday, April 16th.
And where is it?
And that's going to be all day here in the Student Union Building. So it'll be located in various rooms. The keynote speaker, Daniela Zalkman, she's going to be here in the Lake Court Lane Room.
Great.
So I appreciate you pointing that out and giving us extra.
Well, there was another interesting activity that you had, the Round Dance, and you talked about looking forward to going to the next one, but I don't know when the next one is.
Yeah, I probably overlooked mentioning that, too. It's Saturday, April 13th. It's going to be from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
And where is it?
And we're going to have drummers, dancers. That's going to be in the gymnasium here on campus.
Great.
And there'll be arts and crafts. It's a very fun experience.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board, any other comments? Well, Brian and Tracy and Dr. Burns, I'm just so glad this was chosen as a celebrating success agenda item. It's amazing what the Diversity Council does on this campus and for our community. And just the fact that you show so much respect for diversity and you focus so hard on inclusion for all the students on our campus and faculty and staff and visitors, that just, NIC has always been known as a beacon of human rights, civil rights, and, you know, equal for all. But the extra mile that you've gone is just to be greatly commended. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Chair Wood. And I would say, again, I've learned so much from my colleagues. My mother always said, "You're either green and growing, or ripe or rotting." And right, rotting? So I've always tried to apply that to my life and continue to learn. And there are so many great mentors in this group. So I really appreciate being a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our constituent reports. ASNC, Peter Soderberg.
Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. McLennan and guests, always an honor speaking with you today, especially spring break. I was so excited about being able to come back to campus during my break. So nice surprise when I remembered this. So as far as what the Senators and ASNC has been up to, we've continued to be on committees, being able to work with administration, staff and faculty continuously to get that direct feedback from them right away, which we really appreciate the campus letting us be a part of so many of those things. As far as events, we've done a couple of events recently, which was the Basketball Watch Party. We were celebrating the basketball team dominating in the tournament. It was pretty awesome. We were just downstairs in the sub, so we had some TVs going down there and some snacks. So students, they could either stay for a little while, or just while they're eating their lunch, watch the basketball game. But it was a great way to show our great athletic program there and what it's doing. So that was an awesome thing that we were able to do. We were also able to do a skate night over at the Skate Plaza just a few, couple weeks ago. It was recently, we've been realizing that a lot of students want to participate in things, but they don't want to do it here on campus. So we're trying to do more events off-campus, like a movie night, off-campus, or a skate night, which was a great opportunity for students to be involved. We got about 50 students or so who showed up to that. We were also able to partner with Trio with the Scholarship Workshop that they were able to put on here on campus. Trio really did the majority of the work, but they said they had people come on campus who really taught how to, or they did, with financial aid on the scholarship program that we have here on campus. So how to write an application for the committees that review the applications and what people are looking for when you apply for scholarships, what you should write in your essay. So it was a really great opportunity. Trio is amazing. We've loved partnering with them, especially this semester. They've been involved in so many different initiatives to help students here on campus. And so we're always, always privileged to be able to work with Trio on that. We're also, as far as resolutions-wise go, ASNC passed a resolution regarding mental health. We, ASNC sees mental health as definitely a need here on campus. We have one mental health counselor to represent the students. So that was something, on behalf of the students, that we've been hearing a lot from. And we've been talking with administration continuously about it. We're happy to see that we're going in that direction here in the future. So, but adding another mental health counselor is something that's really important for the students here on campus, as well as across the nation. We also passed our upcoming 2019-2020 budget. I'm happy to say we're bringing back the Events Board. So a few years ago, or a few, in the last few years, we've been moving away from the Events Board, which used to have five students who would just plan events for here on campus. Due to budget, we weren't able to have that recently. But this year, we're going to be bringing that back. We'll have five students who work just to plan events here on campus. So that was kind of passed on to the ASNC Senators. But now, with the Events Board being back, the Senators will be able to, again, focus on just projects and working on committees and representing the students in that manner, rather than just putting on events. So we're really excited about the Events Board, and we're also setting aside a portion, and they'll have their own budget to put on events from. So we're really excited about that. Here in the future, we're going to be doing an Easter egg hunt on April 20th. That'll be for the students here on campus, so a lot with the Children's Center. It'll just be on a Saturday here on campus for students and student friends to be able to engage with other families and connect in that way. And then elections are here for the next upcoming ASNC Representatives. So elections are happening April 15th through 19th is when they'll be elected. Right now, they are declaring candidacy, and so far, there's been quite a few students who have declared, and we're pretty excited about those students who are going to be involved. So that sums it up in a nutshell for me, for ASNC.
That's great, Peter. Board, any questions, comments?
No. Thank you.
I do, not so fast. So is next month, we have two more meetings with you.
I think you have one more meeting with me.
One more.
So I'll be here in the April Board Meeting, and then the next ASNC President will be here during the May one.
And maybe at the April meeting, you could tell us your future plans.
I would love to do that, yes.
Okay. And then if you want the Board to have a copy of the mental health resolution, you can just get it to the clerk.
I can definitely do that.
And we'll get a copy of that.
Yeah.
Seems like I had one more. Oh, you made me think of something, with the Board's pleasure, and the President's probably going to do this under his report. But when we wrote this agenda, we didn't know the NWAAC outcome. So after the constituent reports, I'd like to bring up Al and have him chat about that. Al, I'll just put you on the spot. How's that? All right. Thank you, Peter.
All right.
Staff Assembly, Kathy Sparks.
Happy spring.
Yeah.
Yay. So I have a few things, because we've had a couple of meetings. Back in January, Jess Adams reviewed with Staff Assembly what is participatory governance. And we talked about Staff Assembly's role in that, in our participation in the participatory governance here at NIC. In February, we had Peter come and visit us, and he shared some of the exciting things that ASNC is accomplishing, and that includes their tobacco-free policy. We also met our new accreditation liaison officer, Steve Kurtz, and he provided us an update on what accreditation is and the process here at NIC, and where we're at with accreditation for 2020. Jessica also shared with us changes that the Senate is working on for the Policy and Procedure 2.0104, the initiation of policies. And Staff Assembly is in support of the changes that are being made. In March, we had Dining Services, the DEXO come, and they told us all of the wonderful things that they're planning to do in the dining area for students and also for employees. We also had Teresa Boromol come, and she talked about Cardinal Central. So if you haven't been over to LKH to see Cardinal Central, I highly encourage it. It's beautiful. They've done a wonderful, wonderful job there. I also wanted to let you know Tom Green is participating on the Administrative Council Team for Staff Assembly, and he provides us with updates each month. And we have an ad hoc committee still working on revising some policies and procedures. Earlier this month, we had nominations, or a call for nominations, go out for Staff Appreciation Awards. So those nominations are coming in. And then in mid-April, we will begin nominations for Staff Assembly, new members, and elections. And I also wanted to let you know that faculty and staff assemblies work together to put together a brown bag lunch, and this was also in March. And President McLennan, he came and spoke to us about the 360 report for the President's Cabinet. And then Chris Martin also came, and he let us know what was going on with the budget process. So that was really helpful information for everybody. Since December, we have been working on revising our Constitution. And I believe Shannon gave you guys a copy of that. We had the first reading in December and the second reading in January. We had a few changes to make, and so we did an electronic vote on January 28th. And just some of the changes that were made. We did some formatting changes. We expanded Article 1. And if you don't mind, I wanted just to kind of read the Article 1 to you. Staff Assembly is dedicated to fulfilling the mission of North Idaho College. As an organization, we are dedicated to actively participating in the college governance process, fostering a spirit of unity and cooperation among all college employees, promoting and maintaining effective channels of communication between students, staff, faculty, administration, and the Board of Trustees, serving as an advocate for all Staff Assembly members, providing all employees an opportunity to safely express concerns, voice opinions, and provide input regarding policies, procedures, and other institutional actions. And then some of the other things we updated were clarify the duties of Chair and Vice-Chair. And we modified our voting structure so that we could include electronic voting. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Board, any comments? Well, I just had one quick one. My friend Tony toured the Cardinal Center. He said it was amazing. So I think at some point, the Board, maybe, will ask the President to set up a tour so we can see it, too. Sounds just wonderful so far.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Faculty Assembly, sitting in for Joe Jacoby tonight, is it Brian Haniford? Welcome.
Oh, welcome. I don't know what I'm doing. It's my first time at one of these. Chair Wood, Board of Trustees, President McLennan, Vice Presidents, constituents, and community members. My name is Brian Haniford. I'm the, I'm Assistant Professor of Music here on campus. It's my second year, and I teach the NIC Wind Symphony Jazz Band, Cardinal Pet Band. So if you go to basketball games, I'm running that in the last couple of years. And I'm here to speak for Joe because I'm the only one in town, and I am Vice Chair of Faculty Assembly in this second year already. At our last meeting, I have a few things to add. Unfortunately, I'm here speaking, and I didn't even make this meeting because I was working with Idaho Music Education. They had all the students come in for middle school large group and high school large group contests. So I was working with them and giving them feedback. And though it's not so altruistic, I am representing the college at every moment. So at every moment, I can say, "Hey, come to our next concert," and things like that.
Very good.
So, and also, I think I'm pretty good at this, too. So it's no problem when they come into, to come work with me. So at our last meeting, sorry, it's my first time, and I know that I'm on YouTube streaming to millions of people, so I'm a little nervous. At our last meeting, we were updated on the Policy Review Policy and the Copyright and Intellectual Property Policy. And faculty supports the copyright part of the policy, but they're still considering part of the intellectual property policy further. And if there's any questions, I wasn't there to even know what we talked about. We were also updated on various topics like Diversity Symposium and Common Read. But one thing that was brought up recently was brought up by Associate VP for Planning and Effectiveness, Diana Rens. There was a proposal to combine the Staff and Faculty Professional Development Policies, and that was presented to faculty. And faculty is totally interested and looking for further information. At this point, the policy is two separate policies, and all we're trying to do is combine them from two to one policy with separate procedures for either staff or faculty. The college currently, oh, sorry, so that, so it's conceptually streamlining the college's commitment to provide professional development for all employees. And I believe that is it. If there's any other questions, a pretty simple month for Faculty Assembly.
Great. Board, any questions, comments?
Thank you.
You did very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And that takes us to Senate. Jessica Adams.
Good evening, Chair Wood, Trustees, President, Vice Presidents, colleagues, and guests. So we've had several meetings since our, my last report to you guys. Since then, we have approved the Student Complaints Policy and Procedure, which the policy is before you today. We have also approved a first reading for the new tobacco-free campus policy that was presented by ASNC and the Student Health. We have also been going through, and we just passed a first reading, on the proposed revisions to Policy and Procedure 2.0104, which is the Policy and Procedure relating to the initiation of policies. And I'm going to take this time, since we haven't met for a while, and give you guys an update to the background of these revisions, that a lot of them meet of the change, and then a little bit of feedback I'd like from you guys. So, again, it relates to the initiation and revision of policy and procedure. So the major change that we're doing is in regards to adding a review schedule. As all of you guys are aware, the campus has done a lot of self-evaluation this year through the employee survey, as well as through the accreditation self-study. We've learned what we're doing well at and what we're struggling and need some improvement at. One of those areas that relates to Senate is our review process of policies and procedures. We're frankly just not that great of it, but that's okay. We can make improvements. And with some suggestions, like Diana Rens, she provided us input from a process that she was a part of at her previous institution. It got Senate-thinking, and we formed an ad hoc committee to research and explore the option or the potential to create a review schedule here at NIC. That ad hoc committee went out and reached out to institutions across the nation, learned what they did, and a lot of it, a lot of schools were very similar to us and need that improvement. We gained a lot of great insight from those other schools on making the review schedule, how they broke it down, how they then implemented it. And so all of that, we took together and we drafted a proposed review schedule. Now, instead of writing a whole new policy and procedure, we already have one in regards to the initiation and review of policy and procedure and how it goes about it. So we've added it to those policies and procedures. We developed it so that it aligns with our seven-year accreditation cycle, because how great would it be on our next, not this, not next year, but in eight years, when our next accreditation team comes, and we get to show them that we have reviewed every policy and procedure that we have on campus? That would be awesome. So the purpose is, for this review schedule, is to create and outline the process and when policies are going to be reviewed, when. Now, that doesn't mean that a policy has to be revised when it's up for review, because we know that sometimes policies and procedures don't need to be changed. However, at least it's being reviewed. If a policy and procedure needs to be revised and updated outside of the review schedule, that is also allowed. Again, this is a guideline, so that it's regularly reviewed. Now, this is where my feedback from you guys. Let me pull up the policy manual real quick. So I'm not sure if you guys can see that. But the point is, in our review schedule, how we've got, how the ad hoc committee proposed it, is that one of the years that would be up for review would be Section 2 of the Policy Manual, which covers administration, which half of that Section 2 relates to the Board's policies. So that's where the feedback I'm looking for is, because stated in our current policy is the Board's policy are your guys' policy. You guys can ask us for input, but we can't. You guys can ask us for input, but we can't come to you guys with input. So my question to you guys, are you open to having that be a part of the review schedule so that we can have you guys a part of that process, so that you guys would be, that there would be a committee that would come to you and say, hey, this year, or this coming year, you guys will be reviewing your policies? And then we can have it on record along with all of our others when we provide the report to accreditation? So you guys are more than welcome to provide me feedback now. It's kind of on the spot. Or you guys can discuss it and get back to me as well.
Thank you, Jessica.
And that's my report.
Any comments on that, Board?
I would prefer to have an opportunity to review the policy in order to make some kind of meaningful suggestions or none at all.
Yeah.
So, next time, bring it up, bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah. Give us some time, and we will definitely give you some feedback.
Yeah. And I also wanted to bring it up because the policy, we talk about the review schedule, but I wanted to give you a heads up because the actual breakdown of the review schedule and how it's broken down is included in the revised procedure, which isn't approved by the Board, but that also doesn't mean that, you know, we can't revise it as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Great. You're welcome. And that's my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Athletic Director Al Williams, we're just going to put you right on the spot. If you would come up and with President.
Let me match out that section.
Oh, no, you can repeat it, because it's great news. Al, you have some news to share about our teams.
Our teams have done good all year, but basketball. Last time we were here, we had, like Peter mentioned, we had a white celebration. Our team for the women qualified for the playoffs. Always start off with the women first.
Good, good point.
At another great year, 20 and 8, finished third in the NWAAC, qualified for the playoffs as the third seed, and ended up having a tough draw. The East Region was the toughest region of the NWAAC. We had four teams on the women's side ranked in the top six of the NWAAC. And because they don't reseed at the tournament, we ended up drawing the number-two seed, which was Umpqua, a very tough team. They were the champ from the South Region and had them the very end of the ballgame at a one-point lead in the fourth quarter. Unfortunately, had our roughest-shooting night in three-point range and shot three for 28 in three-point range that night, and still had the lead with three minutes left and just couldn't make some shots down the stretch. So we lost to Umpqua and finished the season at 20 and 9, and Umpqua ended up being the runner-up for the NWAAC. So still a great season for the women. Chris Carlson and his staff did a great job. So always proud of the women, how they did representing us as well. Our men's basketball team had a phenomenal year. Overall, they were 31 and 2. They finished the year on a 22-game winning streak. The last loss was at the Mesa Holiday Tournament. Went through the NWAAC unscathed. They were 16 and 0 in league play. They were the number-one overall seed in the polls. They were unanimous the number-one all year long. So a lot of pressure was on them to win all season long as the number-one seed. And we were winning teams, beating teams by an average of 105 to 74. We were the number-one offensive team and number-one defensive team all year long, and just an outstanding year. So they went to the playoffs over in Everett two weeks ago as the number-one seed, played the number-four seed, Centralia, excuse me, Clackamas. They were number-four seed from there down in the first quarter like we always do, and ended up beating them by 20. So next game, we played Centralia, tied at halftime 34 to them, and then ended up beating them by 20. The toughest game was the semifinals. We played the champion from the South Region Lane College. They were number-two in the NWAAC all year. We were number-one in the NWAAC all year. So more or less, that was the championship game. They led for approximately 30 minutes of the ballgame. We never had to lead to the very end and nip and tuck the entire end. Ended up beating them by approximately six, seven points, and then had a chance to play in the championship game against our rival, Wala-Wala Community College for the East Region. We'd seen them, beaten them by, almost like Gonzaga beat St. Mary's and dominated them all year. It was the same way with them. We'd beaten them at their place by 30, beat them in our place by 25, and then ran them to the championship game. They started off the game shooting lights out and shoot about, they were up by nine in the first half and just couldn't miss from three-point range. And again, everybody plays their best game versus, always takes everybody's best punch. We were up by 10 at halftime, ended up beating them, probably I think at this point, a record for the NWAAC, won the championship game by 31 points. It was just an amazing, phenomenal effort by our team to beat Wala-Wala like that. And to have that pressure all year, to be the number-one seed and then go, we won, like I said, our last 22 ballgames was phenomenal. Raekwon Evans was the tournament MVP for his second consecutive year. He was fantastic throughout the tournament. He also was the East Region MVP, but then we also had two other players on first team joining him. Alfonso Anderson is moving on to Utah State. He was first team. Nate Pryor, who's committed to going to University of Washington, he was first team. Ian McLaughlin was voted most inspirational for the tournament. And then again, Raekwon Evans was first team and also MVP. And then Emmett Taylor from Lapway, he was on the second team for all tournament teams. So well-represented, just a great tournament, and it was nice to see the representatives. We had a great crowd come over there and join us over there in Everett from our community.
That's wonderful. Please.
Just a quick question. Do we have any celebrities at the, at the tournament?
We did. Got a lot of attention over there, like most of our players or our top three players have been already committed, but Raekwon Evans has been recruited by several schools around the nation, Utah, Colorado, Texas Christian. But we had a special person who came all the way across the country to see if he was good enough for the program. So NBA Hall of Famer Patrick Ewing took a jet out, flew out from Washington, D.C., flew into Everett on his private jet with his Georgetown assistant coach. He's the head coach there now and has been there for the last two years. Had heard a speech about Raekwon, came all the way across the nation to see Raekwon play. It was just, the Koke-NWAAC crowd was running when you see, you know, Big Pat Ewing coming there. For those that don't know, he's an NBA Hall of Famer, 7'2", all of 300 pounds, walk in the gym, and immediately recognized his presence.
You can't miss him, huh?
And it was nice when everybody asked him, what are you here for? Who are you here to see? And he says, North Idaho College.
Yay! That's wonderful.
It was nice. He was like, he was the talk of the show over there, and he, he's interested in Ray, Ray's interested in Georgetown, so he may go far away from home, but it was just nice to see that much interest there. But there were several of the scouts that were there. But of course, when Pat Ewing shows up, you get everybody's attention when he was there in the gym, so.
That's such great news. Do you have an update on wrestling?
Which direction? Wrestling finished sixth in the nation. Had a great turnout back there. We had five All-Americans. Our highest finisher was Bryce Parsons from Lewiston. He lost his first match of the tournament, and then his next eight matches to finish third in the nation. So great turnout for him. Brandon Richardson did a great job of getting them back. Like I said, we finished sixth overall. We were the region runner-up, and we hosted here at our place, but nice finish for the wrestlers to finish sixth in the nation. So really, really an outstanding performance by them back there. We only qualified seven to go back to Nationals, but five of them came back as All-Americans.
That's wonderful.
We had a third, fourth, fifth, seventh, and eighth, if my memory serves me right, too, so.
And what's starting right now, spring baseball, spring girls softball?
Softball, just came from a game over there. We are at the top of the standings right now. We are six and one. We played all our games at Post Falls High School right now because Memorial Field's not quite ready yet. We're hoping to get there before the season ends, but we played, just finishing up our eight-game home stand. We knocked off Columbia Basin. We split with Wenatchee. We beat Wala-Wala convincingly today. We won the first game 13 to 4, and then when I left, we were down 12 to 4. So I hope we have another comeback like we've had in the past. But right now, returning All-American Matty Mod was on the mound. Every game that she's pitched, we've won, and then we've had a little bit of a, it's when we have our, our second and third pitchers in there, but our offense usually carries us through. But right now, I believe we are, we were, we were five and one as I walked in here. Hopefully, the time I leave out of here, we'll be, we'll be six and one. See what happens in league play anyway.
Well, Al, thanks for letting me put you on the spot. Really wonderful news about all of our programs.
Well, then, we also hosted the High School statewide Basketball All-Star Games this past weekend. It's our 16th annual time we've hosted that event. It's the best of the state. We have it now with a format as the best seniors from the Boise metropolitan area versus the rest of the state, and it's called the Metro versus Region. And we had our 16th game here this past Saturday. Outstanding game, probably one of the best, most competitive games we've had since we've hosted the tournament. It was a three-point game where the region team beat the metro team on the women's side, and then on the boys' side, it was, it took a one-point game where a blocked dunk at the buzzer was at that game was completed, too. So great turnout. Students always love it. They get hosted by the Cordelia Resort. ICCU helps us present that, and it's always fun to get the best in the state and play the last game here on our campus. So great participation by our community to put that on. We hold it right here at the Student Union for the Banquet Auxiliary Service, did a fantastic job to host that. We had President Clinton and his wife, Coach Stanley over here. I want to call him semi-coach Stanley over here. That's a long, we'll get to that later. But just a nice way to congratulate the seniors in the state for having a fantastic season, and then to culminate that with an All-Star game here in Cordelia.
That's wonderful.
It's a great recruiting tool for us as well, too. We'll get a few players out of that ballgame.
Thank you so much, Al.
Thank you.
Great update. All right. That's going to take us straight into the president's report, and we took it all away from you.
No, no. I got a couple of things, not too many. Al, I just want to congratulate Al. So, you know, these athletes are, I've gotten a chance to get to know many of them over the time that I've been here, and our coaching staff and with these young men and women, they just did a terrific job, and they represent NIC very well in the community. Just a quick story about Patrick Ewing. I did get to meet him, and he's a rather large person.
Did you take a selfie?
Huh? I didn't. Because a selfie would have been of him patting me on the head. He literally, I said, you're a lot bigger in person than you are on TV, and he, yes, I am, on the head. So it was kind of fun. It's a great experience, though. Kathy mentioned accreditation, and Steve Kurtz, our accreditation liaison, our officer. The executive committee's just plowing their way through that. Lots of substantial progress on the actual report writing. A lot of folks involved in this, as you can imagine, with a project like this. We'll be bringing this to the Board sometime this spring for an update on, a formal update on where we are in the accreditation process and where those reports are taking us. Let's see, this Friday, I'll be going to Boise for the Idaho Community College Consortium meeting. You will be joining us as well. And the budget process is moving along very well. I know that Shannon has sent out calendar requests to get the, the budget briefing scheduled with trustees, and thank you all for responding to that. Look forward to going through that. Process is going well. It's widespread campus engagement. We're getting things narrowed down to a budget that we think will be a good one, and look forward to bringing that to the Board formally next month. Kathy also mentioned Cardinal Central had its grand, well, it had a soft opening. Grand opening will be coming. I don't have a date for that yet, but we'll be, Board will be invited.
Great.
Come and be a part of that. And I just want to say that, you know, you, we had a workshop here a while back on enrollment, management enrollment services, and all those efforts you learned about, a lot of different things that are coming together where we're crossing over boundaries and departments, and I think we're starting to see the needle move on these enrollment issues that we have around the things that we can control around services and processes. And Cardinal Central, this essentially one-stop, very small, one-stop kind of intake place for students to solve the majority of their intake problems or challenges or the support that they need, and the collaboration that that's taken, the hours, weeks, and months of training that it's taken for the staff who are part of that, and just the support from facilities. And IT, it's truly been a college-wide collaboration to say, you know, we think this is important, we know it's important, let's get it right. And I couldn't be more pleased with what the result has been, and I'm excited for you all to see this physical and programmatic expression of how we're moving forward on these enrollment issues, so. And then I also want to just mention, Ken Wodyski asked me to invite you to an event that's coming up on April 23rd from 10 to 2. The IT department is going to be hosting the first-ever Pave the Way to Global Accessibility Awareness Day. That's going to be from 10 to 2 on April 23rd. And what this is going to, this event will feature over 25 NIC and community exhibitors highlighting accessible technology that's available at NIC and in our community. And, you know, we've received some special funding over the last couple of years to propel us into a really good place around accessibility, and the work that's being done through NIC and then other folks as well is pretty impressive. So if you can, if you get a chance to come and see how that's going, I'd really encourage you to do that. And lastly, Shannon also put out an invitation or some calendar dates to look at a Board workshop to go back into the Capitol conversations that we've been having, both in light of the joint resolution that we took down to try to get through the legislature. We weren't able to do that, and so we've got some time now to take a couple of steps back and chart our path forward. You're also going to learn tonight, you're going to, from Grayden, the results of the athletic expansion. I know you've received a copy of that electronically, and I think that, that the results of that study and then some of the decisions that we need to look at or ideas about how to move forward will also have an impact, possibly on that Capitol conversation as well.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Great. Board, any questions for President McLennan? Comments?
One thing.
Trustee Banducci.
If I saw the email correctly, it's, I believe that meeting's going to be on April 10th from 5:30 to 7:30.
Yes, the.
The Capitol planning.
The cap, the workshop, yes. I think we did settle on that.
So I think that was settled on April 10th from, yeah, 5:30 to 7:30. I think I saw that right before I left the office, so.
Great.
Okay. Well, Trustee Banducci, you are up for the K-Tech report.
Well, the news from K-Tech is, is good. They're doing very well. They're on budget. They're getting the monies they're supposed to get. They, they're the model for the state. A lot of people like to come and look and kick the tires and check it out, and there's a number of things in the works around the state, using us as the example. Couple things, one is we had talked about the new HVAC program. I may have mentioned previously, they have postponed that until the fall semester. Just didn't have enough lead time to advertise it and get the kids enrolled and get signups, and so the numbers just weren't quite there. But with the opportunity now to promote it and get it out there, they are starting to get the numbers, and they feel very confident that it'll fill up for the fall semester, so. Small advertisement here, if you want to study HVAC at K-Tech, go talk to them now before the spots disappear.
Yeah.
The, another thing that's been kind of interesting since the inception of that facility, they, they'd had some challenges with their heating program, and that hasn't gotten a lot of attention, but it's, one of the good news parts is the little issue that they've had, it looks like they're going to finally get it resolved on a permanent basis. So that's, that's good news, at least with the folks in the K-Tech community.
Yeah. Long winter, huh?
Can be.
Cold winter.
Can be. So anyway, that's, that's a good news for them, and enrollment is, again, trending upward. And Colby gave us kind of some examples of, you know, year-to-date and some of the milestone dates as we're preparing for next year, and the people that are getting signed up, and again, that curve is trending upward a little bit, so that's a positive there. So enrollment looks like it's increasing, going to increase again. And I think that's about it. They're doing great. They went through their audit, MAGC and the Q, and came through it with flying colors and everything's spot on, and they're doing a great job.
All right. Thank you very much. Board, any questions for Trustee Banducci? Comments? Joe, I know that we were going to have you, for some reason, we, I didn't get you on the agenda under a title, and you're very distinguished, so I want to put you under a title from here on out. So we were having you do under the remarks of the order, but I want to move that. I would like to have you, right after the K-Tech report, start doing your updates on Meyer Health Science.
Okay.
So do you, could you do that now?
Yeah, I sure can. The Meyer Health Science Committee met and reviewed the RFQ proposals by different architectural firms, and there were two that came to the meeting and made presentations. Now, attending the meeting and our committee members included Lita Burns, Christie Doyle, Paula Lambert, Christopher Healy, Chris Martin, and myself. And we selected an architectural firm to begin the design process for the expansion of the Meyer Health Science Building. It's ALS-C Architects, and the college is in the process of negotiating with ALS-C for that contract. So that's a brief update on where we are.
Okay. Great. Any questions of Joe? Comments?
I was there as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. Oh, I'm sorry, Rick, yeah.
And you are, sir.
Well, appreciate the update and the ongoing updates on this. I suppose you won't have an April one, but that's okay. We'll let you off the hook for April.
Okay.
All right. We do not have any old business, so we're now, we're going to get right into the agenda. Under new business, tab one, our first reading of our Head Start grant, Beth Ann Fuller. Welcome.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, and colleagues and guests, thank you for allowing me to come with the Head Start continuation grant application with our cost of living adjustment for approval this evening. So the purpose of our, applying for our fifth year of funding for our five-year grant period is to continue to provide high-quality, comprehensive Head Start services to children and families in North Idaho. And with that, I have attachments A through F that I would like to highlight, and those would be our program year 1920 continuation grant application, which is the narrative, including program option policy, which is also our service area selection policy, our selection of our target area, and allocation of our enrollment slots. So with attachment B, our criteria for prioritization and selection of our children for enrollment, that document has two major changes to it, and one would be that we added some points for parents to get into our program with their children if they were in public service, and the other would be if they had a lack of affordable health insurance or no insurance at all. Attachment C, our eligibility recruitment selection and enrollment policy, has no changes. Our organization chart follows our grant application narrative in terms of any of the changes that we proposed making to staffing. Our training and technical assistance plan is included, so you can see how we want to use that PA 22 funding that is available to our program to use for all of our training. And also our budget, and then our budget justification narrative is attachment F. And that all includes our federal funding, which is our, called our PA 22 and PA 20 funds, our TANF funds that are afforded to us by the state legislature with federal funds from TANF, and also our Harding rentals, our USDA reimbursements, and our COLA request on how we'd like to, to put our COLA into our budget. I know that's a lot of documents, and I apologize profusely, but if you have questions about any of those, I'm ready.
Thank you, Beth Ann. Fortunately, because we're in our fifth, fifth year, right, this is something the board is certainly familiar with, has seen many times and discussed many times. With that said, board, I would, any questions or comments for Beth Ann? We're going to need some action on this. Trustee Howard.
Well, this is a first reading, right?
Oh, thank you. Yes, it is a first reading.
I suspect, this curiosity more than anything, but this is the fifth, fifth year funding on our five-year grant program, so what happens next year?
So we just received the other day a, an email that said that they are offering us a continuation application for the next five years with non-competitive status, so that means that they will not ask us to compete for that, for this next five years, because we have met all of the specifications of the Head Start grant, and we're not in any kind of designation renewal status. Our last monitoring review was great, and we had no findings. Our class scores, which is our classroom assessment scoring system, was also excellent, so they have offered us going into, this will be the, this next school year would be the fifth year, and then they've already offered us a non-competing continuing five-year grant after that.
Trustee Howard.
When we get into the budget area, for us to take a look at that is kind of like, we don't know what we're looking at for the most part. Who reviews that here at the college? Does, does, does Chris review it?
So Chris reviews it, our senior accountant reviews it, and also spends a lot of time with the figures and making sure that all of our figures are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Trustee Banducci.
You were talking about a couple of the adjustments to the selection criteria, and you mentioned public service. What does that encompass?
That encompasses police, fire, any other type of public service. We're just looking at the fact that when a parent or a guardian that's in public service is, is working in a field like that, that there's often stress for that family for just the danger they're in, for, for one example.
If I may follow on.
Certainly.
So law enforcement, fire, firemen, firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, that sort of thing. Not like necessarily like a municipal employee or county or state or something like that, because sometimes public service can have a rather broad definition. So when I hear what you're saying, I'm thinking more EMS. So is that really the target? So those specific versus overall, what people describe it? Because I mean, some would even describe teachers as public service, so that's why I'm wondering how broad that definition is.
So it's mostly public service in terms of first responders, right?
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Beth Ann. We'll see you back here at Dixman.
And just so, so because there was not a February meeting, our grant is due April 1st, so even though it's a first reading.
Oh.
It would be.
Okay.
We got our letter in February to, to tell us what our funding levels were, and this would be my only opportunity to present the grant for approval.
So there is a time.
But within the tab, it did, it did ask for approval of the grant.
All right. Board, obviously this is a timely issue, and we didn't meet in February, so if, go ahead. We can't, can't be done?
It wasn't designated.
Thank you.
It wasn't designated as an action item.
We'll have to do a special meeting.
We may have to notice this up for a special meeting, or that would probably be the safest thing to do, have it designated as an action item.
Okay.
And we can do that within like a week?
We can do it on 24-hour notice. We've got to get the agenda out with 24 hours, identify it as an action item. We can have one person, if not everybody can be there, we need a quorum, and, and we can have some attendance by phone, if that's what we need.
Okay.
So when is your deadline?
April 1st.
Okay.
That's, that's just a couple of days, so.
Well, that's Monday.
Yeah.
So you're down to two business days prior.
Yeah. All right.
So can I just ask for clarity or for clarification? So within the, so it has to be on the agenda, not on the board tab saying this is an action?
Well, on the tab, I saw that there was action, but the, the agenda listed as first reading, so we'll have to follow the agenda. And so what, we'll, we'll circle up after the meeting, and we'll make sure we get, at least three of us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, hey, I don't want to be accused of being the heartless board that took the money away from the kids. That's good PR.
Good, you'll be in on the conference call, thank you. That takes us to tab two, first reading, student complaints policy, Dr. Lita Burns.
Chair Wood, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to present this brand-new policy at North Idaho College, and it is the student complaints and concerns policy. This policy was actually developed as a part of meeting our accreditation requirements for the Northwest Commute Commission on Colleges and Universities. We really followed the guidelines, which also followed federal guidelines, in terms of developing a policy that provides for students an avenue to voice and have reviewed their complaints regarding any, any issues at the college that have not been addressed under an existing policy, procedure, or guideline related to concerns and complaints. So for example, we have a student code of conduct that really very eloquently spells out the student's responsibility in voicing complaints and concerns. We have academic appeals policy that provides for the students a guideline for how they address their concerns related to academic issues. And then we have very, a great number of programmatic policies, handbooks, that guide students to addressing issues in those arenas. So this is really for anything that lives outside, would be a complaint or concern that lived outside of anything that currently exists to address those concerns. So we presented here this evening for your consideration as a first read, and look forward to being able to have this policy adopted well in advance of our submitting our self-study for accreditation in 2020. I stand for questions.
Chairman.
Trustee Banducci.
When I first came on the board, one of my observations and suggestions at that time was that I'd love to see something that looks like an ombudsman or like what we have in the military with the inspector general, where it was an outside agency, organization, individual, somebody outside the chain of command that was an independent person that could deal with complaints and issues, whether they be faculty, staff, or students. I would suggest that I submit that suggestion again here. Now, whether we had our own resource or whether it was a shared resource with another governmental entity locally, at whatever level that might be, city, county, municipal, you know, whatever, another board, I got to think there's other folks that might have a need for an ability to have that process so that I can appear to not have any attribution, retaliation, be independent in scope, and I just wonder if that's not something we should pursue. I think it would be nice to have. I think a lot of times the system stacks itself on top of each other, where you end up with the student complaints, but the teacher's right in the middle of dealing with that complaint, same as the supervisory level, and you end up stacking on each other, and people are afraid of reprisals. They are, it's human nature, and I'd love to believe people could say, I can stay, you know, even keeled and balanced about the fact that someone just complained about me and while I'm in part of that process. I don't believe that to be the case. I've seen it too many times. So I submit that we pursue looking for something that's independent, third-party in some capacity that we have for complaints and other such things. I seem to be in the business of fielding complaints from the community and students, as you and Grayden and Rick know. That seems to be one of my roles the last six years. And I will commend the command staff, if you will, the senior leadership, because you guys have been open to that and meeting with people and fixing problems, whether it be you or Grayden or Cassie or somebody, and in the last several months, we've dealt with several, and I think we've success, successfully navigated those and negotiated those. I'm not sure that's the final answer, though.
Chair Wood, trustee Banducci, if I may just respond, and I'm not sure that I have the answer that you are looking for at this particular time, but I, first of all, I appreciate your input, and I think that that idea really should be investigated and, and considered and looked at, a means for maybe providing that. And first of all, I would want to make sure that we do some evaluation about, about the need against what we are currently offering. And so I am, I would offer to you that, I think our current system offers some checks and balances in relation to what you're talking about. There's not a single designated person to be the go-to person for students, but I think in all the situations, there's always a person who is directly involved, whatever the complaint or concern is, and then there's always, I would say, somebody who is speaking on behalf or representing the student as well. So for example, many times when there is an academic issue that occurs, and I have a student come to me with a significant complaint about a faculty member, about a course, something like that, I often will ask Alex Harris to join in that conversation, to be a representative for the student, to really be the advocate for the student, because in some cases, I'm, my advocacy is related to the curriculum and the implementation of the curriculum, the evaluation of the curriculum, and so I come from a different perspective than somebody who's representing the students. And I would tell you that that kind of situation occurs ongoing on this campus, and so to a certain extent, I feel like we do provide at least a balance. Is it completely fair, adequate, and, you know, never a problem? Of course not. But I, I think that we strive for that, and I think that's the important piece. But I also heard your suggestion, and I, I will certainly discuss it with President McLennan and the members of the executive council, so that we can see about how we might go about assessing the need for that and then following through, if there is a need established, that how we would follow through to actually provide that. So appreciate that feedback.
Thank you.
Trustee Howard.
Looking at the proposed policy, under the policy narrative, it says that this policy intends to provide standardized procedures, et cetera, et cetera. And when I read that, you know, the policy intends, it sounds kind of hopeful, maybe we'll do it, maybe we won't, maybe we'll get around to it. I think it should read the college shall provide standardized procedures. So that's our policy. And then you've given us a copy of the draft on the procedure, but I think the policy should be more definitive.
Chair Wood, trustee Howard, thank you for that input, and that's an easy change. We can make that change before we bring it back to you for a second read.
Any other? Dr. Burns, that, I'm gathering from this, though, that this, this policy is so that we can meet that accreditation standard, correct? So I'm not sure, I mean, Todd wants to have some discussion about an ombudsman sort of thing. I see that as outside of this. This is critical to accreditation. Yeah, please do.
I, I think that's correct, but I would say in addition to checking a box for accreditation, it's a policy that's been absent that is needed, because our current policies and procedures don't give a place for all kinds of different complaints that might come out of, that might arise that, that those policies don't, don't address. So in the three years that I've been here, there have been, on occasion, a, a concern expressed that we didn't have a policy outlet to address it. And so it's been on our, it's been on our to-do list for a while, and I appreciate the work that's gone on throughout the college and the college senate in particular. I know there were several, this is one of those ones where they, they wrestled with this over several meetings to get here, but, so it is accreditation, but it's also something that we importantly do need.
Okay.
And I agree, this other conversation is, is important as well, and we want to make sure that we're, we're having a, an ombuds position typically isn't going to be somebody that's going to resolve complaints through a formal process, but facilitate communication and conflict resolution, and, and certainly we have some informal ways of doing that now, but it's something that we've actually been discussing this year in more general terms.
And Chair Wood, if I may respond as well to that, I believe that the policy that you would be approving could stand, and we could, if we decided to go the route as suggested by trustee Banducci, that could be a part of the change to the procedure. And so that could be a procedure element and not necessarily a policy element. So I think we can move forward and consider what has been suggested.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Banducci.
Well, good, that leads to my question, because we were provided a procedure that looks like it was developed in tandem with the policy, and I was curious on the genesis of the procedure. So that come from staff assembly and faculty assembly and through the senate? Is that how, is that how this was derived, or where did this come, where did the procedure come from?
Chair Wood, trustee Banducci, the procedure, actually the policy and the procedure came from an investigation of what other institutions are using, a variety of community colleges and, and even some universities. So we pulled the elements that we felt were most applicable to North So we pulled the elements that we felt were most applicable to North Idaho College, and that, we provided a draft, it was the executive committee members that provided the draft for accreditation, and then we took it to our student services folks, Alex and Grayden, to look it over and to provide input. And then after the president's cabinet looked at it, then we took it to the Senate. The Senate is a great forum to present these, because it has representatives both from faculty, staff, and students, and the students actually, as in students, senators who were a part of a three-month process, and so it was kind of a great thing that we had this three-month process, because we actually got more than one set of student senators being present for this discussion. So we got input from a variety of students to this policy. So it has been well-vetted at the institution to arrive at where we are with this procedure.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments for Dr. Burns? All right. Thank you for the first reading.
Excuse me. Chair Wood, I want to just bring up something that we could do with respect to tab one, because I have to read the open meeting law every time, particularly since it's been adjusted. There is a vehicle to amend the agenda after a meeting has started if we declare an emergency and we articulate in the motion, basically it says an agenda, let me just read you what the provision is. An agenda may be amended after the start of a meeting on a motion that states the reason for the amendment and states the good faith reason the agenda item was not included in the original agenda posting. And that would need to be, if that motion's made, good faith reason. What has happened here is we have an agenda item that did not include an action notification to it. So the agenda would need to be, we need a motion to amend the agenda to include action item for tab one, the reason being that the board was unaware that the grant was up for April 1, before the next board meeting, and that's a good-
No February meeting for the first read either.
And that's true. But if somebody will articulate that motion, it's an emergency, the board was unaware that the approval needed to happen before the next board meeting, that's a good faith reason, an emergency, and then we can go ahead, amend the agenda to include it as an action item. The board would vote on that. If that approves, then you can go back to tab one and decide whether the boards will to approve the grant.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Board, trustee Howard in particular, could I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add to tab one item, an amended to include status as an action item. The reason for the amendment is that the board was unaware of the deadline that exists of April 1, and it's necessary to have this matter passed upon by that amendment date. And I think that covers all the elements.
That should cover it, yes.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dunlap. All in favor to amend the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board, with an amended agenda, I'm looking for a motion for tab one. Trustee Howard.
I'd like to make a motion that the board approve, I guess you just need approval of the attachments and the continuation grant application, have an attachments A through F that are contained in attachment one.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for, first of all, thank you, Mr. Lyons, for the clarification, and thank you for making us aware that this needed to be done tonight. We do not want to hold up a big federal grant, so, thank you. All right. That'll take us on to tab three, our athletic expansion review committee report. Grayden Stanley.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, and colleagues and other guests here tonight, thank you for this opportunity on behalf of our athletic expansion review committee to present our results to you. Prior to doing that, I need to share one little tidbit that Al is going to be reluctant to share, but you need to know. The All-Star game that he reported on, they were without a coach for the Metro team. Al approached me, asked me to be the coach, knowing of my stellar record and experience in that regard. At the last moment, Al revoked that invitation, because a coach from the South was coming up. I did tell Al the proof would be in the outcome of the game. In fact, that Metro team that I was scheduled to coach lost by one point at the very end. I was in the stands, I had drawn up a different play that I'm quite certain would have been successful, and the outcome would have been different. So Al knows that next year, I'll have a coaching spot on the floor. Thank you, Al.
Bring your own credentials.
I, trustees, I want to take you back with a little bit of history on this athletic expansion review committee report, and I'm sure, oh, that's not going to be so good for you to read.
Maybe with the light in front off, maybe? Or does that not work for Andy?
We'll see if we can adjust that a bit where you can see that better. None of this is new information, since you'd received the document about a week ago that was the narrative and the conclusions of the work that was done by this committee. But I want to take you back to June, it was this board that asked us to take a look at the possibility of athletic expansion here. You had charged our president and the administration with that. I want to thank President McLennan for asking me to chair that, and then thank members of the committee that we'll recognize in a minute for all the great work they've done. We've met for about seven months, about twice a month, to gather all the information that was presented to you last week, and then we're sharing with the public this evening. In the original charge that was developed in July and presented to you, you might recall that there were three things that we mentioned in that charge. It was what specific sports are students in the community interested in participating in and supporting, which align with other colleges in the NWAAC. What are the estimated costs and revenue anticipated from the proposed sports? And what's the estimated impact of the proposed sports on college enrollment? Those were listed in the original charge. The deliverables, if you were to go back and look at that document, the deliverables, and this was also a part of a report that you received, said if the committee determines that the expansion of athletics programs is in the best interest of the college and the community, then the committee will deliver recommendations to the administration and board of trustees. Included in those recommendations would be the anticipated enrollment and financial outcomes of increasing the number of intercollegiate sports, the specific sports to be offered to female and male students, and the proposed timeline for implementation of the recommendations. So those were our deliverables that I'm providing information to you about this evening. And I certainly want to recognize the members of our committee. This was one of the best committees that I've had an opportunity to work with, who provided outstanding information, did some great work together. We divided into three subcommittees, charged with working in different areas, and I'm real thankful to those members. A few of them could be here. I invited them all to join us tonight. I suspect spring break may have had some impact on that. But certainly want to recognize Al, who's in attendance tonight, Alex Harris, who was one of the representatives, Diana Rens, who's with us tonight. We had other representatives from the athletic department, Don Don and Ken from the men's and women's programs, Paul Manzardo, the division chair for physical education, dance, and resort recreation, Jeff Carr's with us here tonight, and Jeff was representing instruction, our journalism and communication instructor, and Peter, of course, was a student representative on the committee as well. So my thanks to the members of this committee. One of our first charges was to survey the interest of all our stakeholders, and I know, again, you had a chance to read that in your document, but we were so pleased at the participation. As you know, when you go out with surveys, oftentimes it's difficult without major incentives to get people to respond to that. We had a number of stakeholder groups that we identified that we wanted to ask their preferences. Those groups were parents of high school students, they were high school students in our region, it was North Idaho college staff, it was North Idaho college faculty, it was members of our booster club, it was members of our foundation, it was community members at large that could respond to a survey that was promoted to our public, and it was, I think I may have mentioned, it was current high school students as well. When we initially went out with the survey, I approached the principals in region one and asked for their support. They were outstanding in that regard. The principals allowed us access to parents and students through their email addresses, so we sent out these links to students and to their parents as well, and their participation was remarkable, the number that we received, and we could tell exactly when it got sent out, they responded right away. We went back a second time to survey our students. The first time it went out, we had a bit of an error in our surveying, we only had about 80 students respond. We certainly, of all our stakeholder groups, wanted to make sure that our current students had an opportunity to respond. We went back a second time and had over 500 respondents, so it certainly drove the numbers up, and that's why you see, of a total of over 1,700 responses, over 35% came from students. So we were really pleased at the participation in the survey. I know you had a chance to see these, but I want to, for the benefit of the audience here tonight as well, share some of this with you by responses. And again, the responses in the survey, I should note, included options for those sports that we don't currently provide that are a part of the NWAAC conference. Those are men's and women's track and field, men's and women's cross country, men's and women's tennis, men's baseball. By request of the board, we also included as one of the options, women's wrestling by your request. And then we also had as an option that our respondents could say that they didn't believe we should consider adding any sports. So those were the choices that respondents were given. So as we go down this list, you could see that 57% of the total responses, that's over 1,700, indicated we should consider adding women's track and field. By Title IX provisions, we don't put men and women in together, we give those choices up, women's track, men's track, women's cross country, men's cross country, and that's why you see this breakout. 55% indicated that NIC should consider adding men's track and field. 55% indicated NIC should consider adding baseball. 50% indicated NIC should consider adding women's cross country. 48% adding men's cross country. 45% of that, over 1,700, indicated NIC should consider adding women's tennis. 40% indicated NIC should consider adding men's tennis. 26% of the total responses indicated NIC should consider adding women's wrestling, and 14% indicated we should not consider adding any additional sports. Next one, again, I know you had copies, and I apologize if this is difficult for the audience to see as well, but we wanted you to be able to take a look at the preferences by stakeholder group, so you could go through and take a look. We just talked about overall percentages, but you could take a look at NIC students, for example, and note that the largest percentage was women's track and field, it was 78% of NIC students indicated that was a preference for them, and then 77% for men's track and field, and then 75%, or excuse me, 70% for NIC students. And we could go down, you can look by boosters, you can look by foundation, any of the stakeholder groups, this chart shows their level of support for each one of those programs. The second section, so we talked about stakeholder interest, we've done that through the surveying. The second area that we said that we would examine is the student success information associated with our students participating in athletics. You were provided considerable information. What I highlighted in the presentation tonight is academic success as defined by average credits completed per term, and then the average term GPA as well. We went back, we had difficulty finding all the records, because at the time, going back to 2015, we weren't tagging all of those students in our student record system. We went back to rosters and identified those students who appeared in rosters and tagged them, and then went back and extracted information about them. So our information isn't necessarily 100% right, it's probably really close, but rosters don't always match up with who ends up being participants. So as we did that, looking, again, separating men and women, and then you saw combined information here, but you could look at the men's sports compared to their cohort group, and the cohort group, in this case, would have been other men who were degree-seeking. They had the same characteristics as the males in these athletic programs, with the exception of they weren't participating in athletics. So the comparison group, you would see in most of our programs, the average number of credits completed, and the GPA was just slightly lower than the control group in the men's programs. It varies a bit by term, but fairly consistent across that span. And then if you went to the next one, was academic success for women, and as you looked at that over the same terms, you would probably note that the number of credits completed and the average term GPA was slightly higher than the control group as well for the women. And lastly, one of the charts combined this athletic total, so it was men and women together. Our belief is that students who participate in those cohorts have some of the instruction and some of the supports to be successful in the classroom, that they would do better, and in fact, that shows as you combine men and women, that the average number of credits completed and the GPA is slightly higher than the cohort group of men and women combined. Another area that we reported on was the current status of athletics, and I know you're familiar with some of this. Just tonight, we were celebrating some of the success of our programs that Al had shared and that the president had shared with you as well. Most of us are familiar with that. Some other areas that we took a look at that spoke to our current status of the athletic program was a facility review that was conducted almost two years ago. A number of important stakeholders, led by Chris Martin, Alex Harris, coaches, Al, and a few others, did a facility review. What we found from that review, we looked at it particularly through the lens of Title IX, to make sure there weren't any inequities, that men's and women's programs in the same sport didn't have inequities in terms of facility. It was concluded from that report that there weren't any inequities related to gender. It was also concluded, though, in that report, that we did have concerns with some of our facilities, a few of those, you're familiar with ADA concerns related to the gymnasium. There are some issues about locker rooms and availability and access for locker rooms as well, and I suspect a few others, but that was, those were the primary results from our facility review. I've shared with you that this last year, I chaired a committee that was a Title IX review of all of our athletic programs, looked again at three primary areas related to Title IX. Those have to do with participation, opportunities for participation based on gender. As we looked at that, there were some slight inequities that were identified, meaning that participation opportunities have to be comparable to the overall number of students by gender who are full-time, first-time, degree-seeking students here. As we did that, we were about 3% off in that, so we needed to increase, we need to increase the opportunities for women by about 3% to match up with that comparison. We took a look at the opportunities to do that, along with, Al certainly lead that, leading that, and it's easy for us, as you noted in the narrative, to just do a little tweaking in our rosters. We can add a few in a couple women's areas, we can decrease a few in a couple of the men's areas, and not impact the success of that program, nor impact the financial part of that. NWAAC rules don't allow us to scholarship all the way through the roster, so if you went from a 25 roster to a 22 roster, there isn't necessarily savings in scholarship, because not all of them are scholarship. You might lose out on a little opportunity for revenue, because you may have a few less students that are coming here to participate in that sport. The point is that our participation opportunities by gender were fairly equitable, and it's easy for us, and we have a plan, in fact, in place, to make those, you have three years to remedy any of these issues. We believe in this, next year, we would have that with current rosters and sports taken care of. There were no financial support inequities, and the narrative had also noticed we have an obligation to look not only at the resources that are provided by the institution, but those resources that are provided by the booster club. In fact, we did that, and in our review that was led primarily by Chris Martin and his team, it was found that there aren't any existing financial support inequities. As we looked at salaries, as we looked at financial support, as we looked at process, there weren't any inequities based on gender. And lastly, student experience- And lastly, student experience inequities. We did identify some inequities in that regard, and I want to share with you real quickly what those are and remedy for that. Our HR department went through and did a review of the job descriptions for all the coaches and assistant coaches. And what we recognized was, there was, in a couple of cases, it happens to be for men's soccer and women's volleyball, that the job descriptions included a substantial percentage of time spent doing other duties not associated directly with that sport, game management, for example. So Kelsey and Ken, those head coaches in those programs and their assistant coaches, had some responsibility that came about several years ago to do game management at different events, not only their own, but at basketball games and other events. And so it takes away from the student experience, meaning that, and that's a lot of the justification for evaluation of Title IX, is the student experience similar for athletes across programs? You can imagine if you have a head coach in volleyball that, say, fifty percent of her responsibility is related to working with her team, and the other fifty percent is related to game management. That's not how it was broken out, but just for example. Comparing that to another program, that ninety percent of the coach's responsibility was working with the team, and ten percent was financial management or fundraising or something else, the experience of those students would be different because of the amount of time that the coach has available to work with the students directly. So our HR department did a great job identifying that. Al and I have worked together to remedy that in this year. We have some opportunity to redistribute some of our money, so that we can re-describe those two positions, so that inequity won't exist after this year. So we should have addressed all of our Title IX concerns probably within this year, but it'll be something that we review on a quarterly basis, on an annual basis, so we'll be mindful of that moving forward. Title IX implications for increasing the athletic opportunities for students here. I think it's important for us to note, again, equitable participation opportunities tell us this, that if you were to, for example, and it's based on roster size, if you were to add baseball, which provides more opportunity for males, then you'd have to have offsetting opportunities for females. In this case, as we looked at roster numbers, and they were reported in your narrative, you could then add women's track and field and women's cross country, and then that would have a neutral effect on your participation rate. We would be in compliance with Title IX opportunities. You could add just, and these are separate items, you could add, for example, just men's and women's track and field, because obviously the numbers in each one of those programs are the same, and so that would keep us at an equitable state. You could add just men's and women's cross country, or men's and women's cross country and men's and women's track and field, because the numbers are equal based on gender, and that wouldn't have any, that wouldn't have any negative effect on our participation opportunities. Or you could have other combinations. But the important thing to note, as we examined this, we looked at the top three choices by stakeholders. We can certainly look at some of those others as well, but we have to make sure that we don't offset that equal opportunity by gender for participation of students. And so that's why we offered these as potential scenarios. Again, Chris and committee members worked together to develop the financial implications of this, and you have that information as well. It was broken down into a couple different areas. Startup cost was certainly one of those, and so one of the charts that, and again, I talked about, we took those top three stakeholder choices, baseball, track and field, and cross country. We looked at startup cost being the cost of uniforms, the cost of equipment, and then just that total startup cost. You would note, like, track and field is pretty heavy on equipment on the front side of that. Baseball, not as much. Cross country, obviously, much less for any startup. Costs for cost of equipment and uniform cost. We looked at annual costs for operating these programs. Personnel and travel costs were based on similar kind of programs, or looking across the NWAAC. We have, in nearly all of our programs, we have a full-time head coach and a full-time assistant coach, so that's what we were basing personnel costs on. Travel costs were similar, too. You could look at softball and compare that to baseball and come up with similar kind of travel costs. Net tuition was easy to do, because NWAAC tells us that we can only scholarship up to sixty-five percent, Al, sixty-five percent of the cost of tuition. For half of the roster, and so these, this is a reflection of what the NWAAC allows us to do, and is comparable to our other programs. So total projected revenue on an annual basis, including net tuition and then these other annual costs, you could see with baseball, it was approximately sixty-five thousand dollars in the red that would have to be subsidized, with track and field approximately forty-five thousand. And for cross country, approximately a hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis. There could be some savings, and it was noted in your narrative with track and field and cross country, it's not unusual that you wouldn't, that you would have same coaches for both programs, cross country being a fall program, track and field being a spring program. It's quite common that those coaches will be the same for that sport, so you could have some considerable savings on the personnel side if you were offering both of those Facility cost, Chris and committee reached out to Architects West and asked them to provide this information to us. So there were construction costs, additional costs for other equipment and support, and came up with a total cost for things that would be needed for programs in terms of new construction, new facilities. We did consider the rental or the lease of facilities that already exist. That's problematic for us a bit, in that they're so overused to begin with, to share those with the high schools and to share practice time and game time. That's fairly difficult to do. It's possible, but it's just a bit difficult to manage. I think softball, we'd probably attest to that a little bit now with where we're at. So you had figures in there that had to do with a field house that would be shared for programs, dugouts, scores booth, baseball field, baseball totals. So that was information that was provided to you. Total facility cost with construction costs, additional costs, that's all, that was all listed for you in the narrative that you received. Financial summary, just looking across the board, then, of all of these, that was one of the last charts that you had in the finance area. Talks about potential enrollment in baseball, thirty, in track and field, twenty-five, in cross country, twelve. That, by the way, and I'm going to check with Diana on this one, but the twenty-five and the twelve are single gender, track and field. Twenty-five was just men, or it could be just women. So total, if it were track and field, then it would be fifty. Cross country is twelve men or twelve women, and so you could double some of that without doubling necessarily the cost. Alex, Al, Diana, checking on those facts. That's, I'm getting a thumbs up on that, okay. The one-time cost, again, you had seen the facilities cost, so projected revenue, ongoing cost, there's the total if you roll everything up together. So that was the information that was provided to you. I was remiss in not sharing with you. One of our committee members, Diana Rins, was fabulous, did outstanding work for us. Diana was the one who worked long and hard in coming up with all this data that didn't exist, and so had to go back and create that, did a lot of analysis, kind of day in and day out, to make sure that we had reliable statistics and information for you to look at, and was instrumental in preparing some of this narrative for you tonight as well. So I want to particularly point out and thank Diana for her great support of this project as well. So Board, there's the information that our committee put together over the course of the last seven months. I hope it addressed what your concerns were and the information that you were seeking. I would be glad to stand for any questions, and I would include my committing members. I know they would be glad to address your questions as well.
Grayden, I thought you had one more piece of data for us before we go into discussion. I thought you had the community piece, the financial impact in the community.
And I apologize, I don't have the numbers, but I want to speak to that. I can send those numbers back to you. But one of the things we looked at, oftentimes you look at other revenue that'll come in as a result of sponsoring these programs, starting these programs. Auxiliary revenue is what we refer to it as, and particularly room and board, if you have these additional thirty students coming into the college, the room, a board, and books, and the other revenue that they would produce for us. We didn't include it initially, because our residence hall is full, and it's not necessarily empty spots that they're filling. It would, potentially with food service, if they were eating there, provide some revenue to us. It would, with books, provide some revenue to us as well. And so I'm sorry, Chair Wood, that I didn't bring that, but I can share with you what that is. It's not necessarily revenue to the institution. In some cases, it may. Most of these will probably be, if we expanded sports, would probably be living off-campus in apartments, eating in different places. So it's revenue that certainly comes back and impacts this community and adds value and improves our economy in this area as well. It does change when you include that. It changes the bottom line. Where you saw some of those negative figures, it makes them close to awash in a couple of those programs, when you add anticipated revenue from auxiliary services. I'm sorry, and I'll be glad to share, I have different scenarios that I can send to the Board.
And I think there was one more piece of data you were going to talk about. The, it's not just the athletes themselves that we look at for enrollment, there's also friends, family. I don't know if you have any data on that.
Don't have specific data. Anecdotally, and I think probably most of you know this, it's hard to get real scientific numbers associated with it, but we know when somebody chooses to come to school, here's a basketball player, it's a baseball player in track and field, that typically they'll have friends who will join them as well. They're choosing to come to North Idaho College, and so they might have two to three, three friends join them as well. So the impacts on enrollment is likely higher than what you saw just based on roster numbers. That same thing could be said of students participating in other academic programs as well. But certainly, we know, as students choose an institution, for whatever reason, because of an athletic program, because of an academic program, typically there's, they're friends and family members then who may also come to the college as well. Don't know that I have any science to those numbers, but certain that that's true. Chair Wood.
Thank you. Board, questions? Trustee Banducci.
I don't know if it's as much a question as an observation. It was interesting, and I know you have to make choices, and how you narrowed it down to the sports you did, because I'd reviewed this whole document, and I've liked to look at it a couple of times, and I was glancing at it again tonight. And I thought it was interesting how some of the sports that are more mainstream, had a lot of people said, "Yeah, yeah, add them." And something like the women's wrestling is a little more of a niche sport, and so not as many people said, "Add them." But when you went back to those folks that said, "Yeah, add that sport," and you said, "But how many of you are actually going to attend?" Or "How many of you are actually going to provide financial support?" When you ask that to the community, to the boosters, stuff like that. It was interesting how the niche sport like women's wrestling, although the absolute numbers have said, "Yeah, we should add the women's wrestling," the actual percentage in numbers that said, "Yeah, I'm going to go attend," or "Hey, I'm going to give them money," or "Hey, that's a great thing," was significantly higher. So it was interesting how, even though it was a smaller group, that group was much more motivated.
Thank you, Chair Wood.
And you looked at cost, too. I know you have to cut it back, too. It was hard to compare apples to oranges in some sense, because the ones you picked, we had to buy all the new stuff for. Again, I'll use the women's wrestling example, it pretty much just piggybacks on the men, you know? You have mats, you have room, not a whole lot more you had to do there for equipment, for example. So it's interesting how you had to make those choices.
Chair Wood, trustee Banducci, and for the audience, too, I know the Board had a chance to see this. One other element that I didn't speak to is, those stakeholder groups, we asked them, the next level of question was, if you chose baseball, and let's say it's to the student group, how likely are you to attend North Idaho College and participate in baseball, or go to the baseball games? To a foundation member, it was, if you chose baseball, for example, how likely are you to provide financial support to that program? If it was faculty or staff, it was, how likely are you to attend those games? And so we not only wanted to know their choices, and they could make all those choices, they weren't forced to a single one, they could indicate a number of choices. But then the question came back, is how likely are you to support that in terms of finances, attendance, participation, those items as well? And that's what trustee Banducci was referring to as well.
Trustee Howard.
There is a lot to go through here.
There certainly is.
And thank you for getting it to us in advance. I still, I suspect, want to spend a lot more time with it, but as I go through some of these things, you obviously had to engage in a number of assumptions in order to get to where you're at. And when we started talking about the, I forget what title it was that you gave this, financial impact summary, and you've got a potential roster of thirty or sixty if it's men and women, do I understand that right?
Not on baseball, but on track and field and cross country, those would double if it were men and women. Baseball, it would just be, we already have softball, that's kind of the counterpart, so baseball would stay at thirty.
Okay. So, but is the assumption then that every one of those roster members is going to be recruited, and they're only coming here because of the sport, and we're not having people who would like to come to NIC and would like to do something, and so they engage in this sport? I mean, how do you get to that number, that you're just assuming they're all new students?
We're, I, thank you, Chair Wood, trustee Howard. We did make that assumption. I don't know that that's necessarily accurate, because we know that some of these students may have been coming here otherwise. It's like asking the students here on campus who took the survey, "How likely would you be to participate in cross country," our student body president, "if that program were offered here?" And I think Peter would probably tell you, "It was likely that I would do that, but he was going to be here otherwise." And so these aren't all necessarily new numbers who wouldn't have come to the institution otherwise. We made that assumption that these are new. I don't know that that would be accurate.
I guess as we look at numbers, and if we use numbers to try and help us make decisions, I look at those numbers, and I wonder how valid they are, especially when you apply that then to the scholarships and some of the other assumptions that are made in terms of what the total cost is going to be. So, okay, thank you.
Chair Wood and trustee Howard, I would note, too, I think you understood the numbers that we arrived at for potential enrollment were based on roster sizes as prescribed by NWAAC and common across the association. We went and looked at all the other teams across the association to see what kind of numbers they were carrying in their program. So it's common within our association.
Trustee Dunlap.
Grayden, was there concern expressed that establishing a new athletic program would take away resources from an existing academic or other athletic program? Or was there an understanding that establishing a new athletic program would require new
Chair Wood and trustee Dunlap, we didn't have that extensive, we didn't hear that from our stakeholders. We didn't ask for that kind of commentary from any of the people that we surveyed, so we didn't hear it that way. We had brief discussions about that within the committee itself. And within the committee, I don't think that there, and they could certainly speak to this as well, I don't think any of us talked about there would be declining support for any of the programs if we were to add additional ones. I think there was a concern expressed about, we have needs in current programs that need to be addressed as well. ADA compliance with the gymnasium, for example. So if you had a limited pot of money, greatest need might be with existing programs and facilities. And so that was more the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
No. Where are we going with this? I suspect this is going to have a discussion we would engage in again when we start to talk about the facilities plan.
Yes, this is.
Because it's part of, part of an overall facilities.
Yes, we have set up a board workshop where we can really dig into this. By the way, the committee just did really wonderful work on this. I mean, really drilled down. So thank you for that. We know it took some time. I think when we asked for it last fall, I was, I said, "Well, can we have it in a week?" But you said no, and you just really did some good work for us, gives us a lot to continue the review. So we will do a workshop, because it ties into a lot bigger discussions. Do you want to comment on that?
Just, I just want to also add my appreciation to the committee and Grayden for doing that. And to the questions, this is a starting point. There are a lot of assumptions in here, and, you know, they can, they can go one way or they can go another, and I expect that when we get into this discussion, the workshop, we'll get into some of the nuances of what those assumptions are. And then really, where do we, so where do we want to go with that relative to the resources we have, the resources we can generate, and in the context of all the other conversations we've had and work we've done on facility master planning to support these programs? And one of the assumptions in here, too, is that this does not anticipate any land acquisition cost. So either with our existing land that we already have, or land that is gifted to the college, is the assumption that's made. And so I just wanted to make sure that was known as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this, Board? Any further discussion on this, board? We save it for our workshop? Thank you, Grayden. Thank you, committee. Nice work. Takes us to tab four. We have a nomination for emeritus status. Trustee Howard, you're going to do the honors.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion so that we can have something to discuss. I suspect I'd like to make a motion to nominate and admit to emeritus status Judy Meyer.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
Second by trustee Murray. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
Yeah.
Not move this along too fast.
I'm in favor. Discussion, trustee Howard.
Yeah. Judy is known by most of us for her long service here at NIC, but her services to the community at large, she's one of those extraordinary people who, you look around and see the contribution she's made to the state and to the community, not just through NIC, but all the time representing NIC and having in her heart NIC. Obviously, the Meyer name is on the Health Center building. That's certainly part of her heritage here, too. But there are so many things that she's done, and I think that she's just a great example of who we ought to have as emeritus status members.
I certainly agree with that. Board, any other comments, discussions about Judy? Trustee Dunlap, you look like you want to say something.
I just have a question, and that is that there was a motion made, but this is the first reading of this, correct?
Yes, first reading.
Okay.
So we won't take any action? So we really didn't need a motion, did we?
Pardon? No, we've got the motion. It's on the table.
We'll take action at the next one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That clarifies it. Thank you.
Okay, so under discussion, I certainly agree with everything you've said, trustee Howard. Judy's been a fixture on this campus. Even after retiring from the board, she continues to contribute every opportunity she gets, and she'll always be a champion for NIC, not only at the local level, but continues to be a champion for us at the state level. She never misses a legislative session and talks about how great NIC is. She's incredibly proud of this institution, and we're so proud of her. So I appreciate your motion, and I look forward to the next meeting.
Yeah, I have a question. Because this is the first time we've done this, we don't really have a procedure for it. But this is the first reading. There will be a second reading. I'm hopeful that she will be elected as emeritus.
Yeah.
But I would hope that we will invite her here so that we can have an appropriate presentation of the results of our vote and thank her personally for that. So if we put it on the agenda with that kind of an opportunity to say thank you to her.
I agree. It might not be the next agenda, but possibly the May agenda, and I completely agree with your assessment.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, I have lost my agenda. It's way back here. Yours has writing all over it. Okay, so we will go to tab five, official spring enrollment. Diana Rents.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and guests, I am just the warm-up act for Diana Rents. So I want to just share a couple of things with you before Diana shares all of the data. Let me grab this real quickly. What I want to note is, we've already had a lot of discussion tonight about enrollment, and that certainly continues to be a priority of the institution, as evidenced by some of our initiatives, our committees, and the work that we often do. As you see this data tonight, I think you'll note that there aren't any particular surprises other than the format, and the presentation has changed a bit for you tonight, and we believe will provide even more valuable information to you. Our data follows trends that you've been witnessing for a number of years, also follows the trends that are happening at similar other institutions as we compare ourselves to the region and around the state. You need to know prior to seeing these figures, too, or just be reminded of some of the work that we're doing. We heard about Strategic Enrollment Management Committee tonight. That group has been in place and been active for about a year now, and their focus among two subcommittees has been on recruitment and retention. As we look at numbers, I think you'll hear from everybody that it's not so much the students coming in our door, but the students, once they're in our door, staying here and completing. So retention is an area that we're certainly trying to put more emphasis on. You heard mentioned tonight, and I'm really anxious for you to see that facility, the Cardinal Central Enrollment Services Center. It has really, it is really best in practice of how we serve students here on our campus and prospective students as they visit our campus. In its opening last week, we had some prospective students who came to our campus, went over to receive services, and were raving about how they received it, who provided it, the great customer service and the information that they received. So I'm so anxious to show you that and how we're providing service to students. There's also a committee that's working on leveraging our scholarship and financial aid dollars. We've not often been, we've not been as strategic about that. We're fortunate to have a foundation that provides such extraordinary support to us in terms of scholarship, and we are working to leverage that money better to impact our enrollment. There's an initiative that's in place that Peg Blake and Dr. Larry Briggs and others have been a part of, talking about advising here on our campus, mandatory advising for all new students, eventually rolling that out to mandatory advising for all students. That's critical for the demographics that we serve, that sometimes they don't know what they don't know, and so we need to make it mandatory so that we're able to impart value to their decision-making. Our budget process, and you'll have a chance to see that in the next month or two, you'll see most of the requests, and much of the emphasis, again, is on enrollment. So it's certainly at the top of mind for all of us. And as a great segue to introduce Diana for the statistics, there's been work we've done recently, you've heard a bit about it, the CROWA tool, which allows us to take the data that was pretty much already in place, but manage it in such a way that it creates value in our decision-making, so that we truly can be data-informed when we're looking at recruitment, when we're looking at retention. We can utilize our numbers to develop strategies. We've not had that previously, and through Diana's leadership and a number of other people on our committee, we, on our campus, we have a tool now that is expanding almost weekly to provide us with more valuable information to impact enrollment and other services. So that is my lead-in to Diana Rents, who will share the statistics with you.
Thank you, Grayden. Oh, my. Thank you, Grayden. I appreciate this time to share with you. We've had lots of exciting information about diversity council tonight and the athletics program, but I know, I know that you're really here to see numbers, because this is, you know, what I get to geek out on, and I'm sure you share my passion for it. So thank you for taking a look at enrollment numbers tonight. This, Grayden mentioned retention and completion, and of course, I would love to share those with you as well, if that's something that the board is ever interested in. But tonight, we're going to focus on some enrollment.
I agree.
And this data does show students only in credit-bearing courses. As you well know, the institution has a broad impact, lives touched on, in Cootney County and beyond, in our workforce training center in the post-falls area, as well as non-credit courses for personal enrichment. But this just focuses on credit-bearing courses. And I said in this slide that this data shows five-year trend as of March 15th each spring, but you are lucky folks who get to see six years of data as of March 15th. And so we're looking at head count, and this particular head count, as we kind of talked about in a prior presentation, when we looked at a 20-year spread of head count, this is not necessarily to be considered a decline in enrollment, but returning to a baseline after the increase in enrollment with the Great Recession that began in 2008. And so this particular slide just shows you a six-year trend, but don't forget about that increase during those years. This is head count by student type. As, might not surprise you, we have our vast majority of student enrollment in the general studies programs, which are our transfer programs for four-year institutions. We also have a fair amount of students in career and technical education programs and our dual-credit enrollment. This slide shows you enrollment by the county of residency that the student has claimed on their application forms. So obviously, there is a large proportion of students coming from Cootney County, but you can see the additional breakdown there. There are significant numbers coming from all the counties in our service area, as well as other Idaho counties and other counties in the United States. Average age of our students since spring 2014, looking from 27 down to about 24. If we look at the, you know, overarching age of human lifespan, that's not a very significant drop, but, you know, there's a little bit of a drop there. We could do a lot of speculation on why that might be. I think, you know, definitely, again, the impact of the period of the Great Recession from 2008 to about 2012, in which many workers, employees found themselves out of work, came back to school, obtained additional education to go back into the skilled labor force. So this is a, so this is a little bit returning to what in HAREAD we might call a traditional age student. Number of credits taken remained fairly consistent, even though with a slight drop from year to year, but again, coming off of that period of high enrollment, this is not surprising, and just returning to baseline. Full-time compared to part-time, our full-time students in yellow there in this slide, part-time students in blue, and we do see, you know, again, slight, slight changes, but a little bit of a trend of declining full-time enrollment and increasing part-time enrollment. Again, there are a variety of nuances as to why this might be, speculating a little bit. I would want to do some additional research before we, yes, Mr. Howard, trustee Howard.
The part-time students, does that include the dual-credit students?
Yes, yes, it does, unless the dual-credit student, I have heard, I don't, I have heard that there are a few dual-credit students who are full-time enrolled with 12 credits. But yes, our dual-credit students would be, for the most part, included in this part-time bars. And, and I guess if I would take it one point further, our dual-credit program has significantly boosted in enrollment over the last few years. So that may be a big part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Credits by student enrollment type, so again, we're looking at those three categories of the general studies students in that blue bar, career and technical education enrollments in the orange bar, and then dual-credit program. Again, you know, you can see a slight decline in the number of credits taken overall by general studies students, and some small fluctuations year to year with the CTE and dual-credit programs. I have, as Grayden mentioned, lots and lots of other reports that show information like this in greater detail, but this is just an overview for tonight. And that's all I have for you. Any other questions?
Nope, but I got a comment.
Trustee Banducci.
One of the things that's become apparent to me is the shortcoming of our process, and let me explain that. If I have an adult that's in their 30s or 40s or 50s, and they'd like to maybe complete their degree, but they have a full life, and so they can only take one class, or maybe two classes a semester. The way we amortize that out with all the fees that are lumped on top of that, on a per-credit basis, those classes become awfully darn expensive. And I think that's a disincentive to some of our senior folks that can't take a full-time 12 to 15 to 16 credit load and amortize out those fees over all those credits. It's, I look at that, and I'm thinking, if I'm a person with 40 credits, why do I want to pay 500 bucks for a three-credit class? And then take that one at a time, it's going to take me a while, and I'm throwing it, maybe I get the degree, what am I going to do with the degree? But there's a disincentive there. Even if you'd like to learn, how much do you want to spend to go sit in a class for history or English or something? And I think the way our model's set up, it's very much a disincentive to those working adults that can't afford to come full-time or even half-time. And if they just want to try to pick it at a class at a time to work towards that degree to eventually graduate, I just don't see it as being very efficient.
Thank you for that input, trustee Banducci. You bring up some very good points. I would say to you that we here at North Idaho College are always working to improve processes, systems and structures to better serve our students, our community, and our staff members, in fact. So those are some good points for consideration.
Here's the follow-up point to that. Most scholarships from the foundation or elsewheres, grants, subsidies, whatever, Pell, CIOG, whatever, are all designed for full-time students. So if you are a part-time student, not only do you see those costs, but there's not many things that are available to you to try to offset them, because the system's just not set up that way. It's a systemic problem.
Chair Wood and trustee Banducci, if I might respond to that. That goes back to what I was talking to you about in terms of an initiative, looking across our campus about who our students are, and you saw those percentages. As we're looking at leveraging our scholarship dollars, we can make that provision to use some of that money to incentivize completion, incentivize affordable costs for part-time students that way. So I think you'll see some of that work coming forward to address those needs.
But if I could just, just one thing, on the financial aid side, it does accommodate part-time enrollment. So down to six credit hours, I believe?
That's correct.
So below that, no, but at the six-credit hour, students will qualify for the amount of aid at that level.
Trustee Howard.
If I'm not mistaken, this data that you presented to us is based upon credits and does not include things like workforce training. I think there was some comment about that at the beginning of the presentation. So who is not included in this data?
It would be, and Diana, I'm going to look to you. I think she prefaced that to begin with. These are all the credit-bearing courses. So the ones who are not, so workforce that isn't attached to credit or tuition and fees directly, just program costs, those wouldn't be included. Community development kind of courses, if it was continuing education kind of courses, wouldn't be included in this as well. So as a comprehensive community college, some of the other work that we do isn't measured in this report for groups of students who aren't receiving credit. That's correct.
And I guess if we wanted to get an idea of whether or not the college is experiencing any reduction in attendance overall, that would include those other components, how would we do that?
Trustee Howard, I think it would be important for us to come back and provide that greater picture. We've had growth, and certainly an emphasis here is in our workforce development programs, and so to bring those others forward to you and look at trends for those over the last five years, that provides a more accurate picture of students who are participating in our services or programs that are offered. We can bring that back to you as well for the non-credit-bearing students who are being served.
May I piggyback on that, Ken? Are you thinking of the workforce training center? Because I've wondered about that myself.
Yeah, I guess my concern is this. We sit here as trustees, are asked to make decisions about budgeting and, you know, try and understand the trend of the college and try and make sure that it's healthy, and that seems to be part of the picture. I mean, the workforce training is, there's money that comes in, there's work that goes out, there's success, and there are other components maybe of what we do that engage members of the public, whether they're income-producing or not. And I guess in order to assess whether or not we're really seeing much of a downward trend or whatever, this is certainly an important part of it. But there obviously seem to be other significant portions that I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a sense of how we're doing. Is workforce training dropping down? Has it been steady? Is it going up? And how is that impacting our budget and that sort of thing?
Dr. McLennan, you wanted to answer?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Wood. Trustee Howard, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that question. When I try to explain enrollment, I'm out in the community, and somebody says, "Tell me about your enrollment," and I have to go into the story of breaking it down and how particular different ways we do that. What I think would be instructive, and you'll see this in the budget presentation next week, some indication of how we're doing in some of these other areas. And I'm not going to publicly announce a number, but the revenue is substantially up in workforce development this year, to the extent that we're building in very conservatively some of that revenue into the next year's budget recommendations. And that's largely not unlike the efforts we're making in enrollment on the credit side, the program development and the community engagement on the customized contract training and workforce development side, and the integration of the faculty and programs in post-falls with the work and the faculty that we have available and equipment that we have access to in the Parker Technical Education Center, and a pretty And a pretty substantial reorganization of the effort in workforce development are all starting to produce some real gains in terms of how we're meeting those types of educational needs in our community. It goes back to some of the planning work that we began with was, we really need to understand what our community needs us to be in these particular areas, and where are we not taking the opportunity or the advantage of those opportunities to grow enrollments in different ways that are not credit? And so I think it would be instructive for us to actually put that slice of enrollment picture together for you. It is complicated, it is, there's some unique attributes and aspects to it, and Dr. Burns, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Chair Wood, President McLennan, thank you for this opportunity. Yes, I would concur with what Dr. McLennan has indicated. And another area that I want to just make public about our growth, it really has been in apprenticeships as well. And that is, again, consistent with a cycle of economic growth and economic decline. So during times of economic growth, our apprenticeship programs become quite popular, and they are, they have grown exponentially over the last couple of years, and that has really contributed to what has occurred in terms of the revenue and increase in, at the Workforce Training Center. So there are many sectors. It's the customized training, it's the apprenticeship, and it's the involvement in some of the statewide workforce sector grants that we have received that have contributed to the very good success that we are seeing at the Workforce Training Center, so.
Good news. Okay, Trustee Howard?
I must confess, there are probably educational environments offered by NIC that I'm not even aware of. But the community development, I think you called that, where people just want to take a course on how to use Microsoft or something like that. There are components of what we do here that are critical, I think, to our understanding the value of NIC. And so I'd like to see some charts, quite frankly, that if we got a growth in workforce training, if we got a growth in some of the other areas that we service, to see, even if we treat them separately, not treat them as part of this quantity of data, so that we can get a picture in our minds, or at least I can get a picture in my mind, of the components that we have on campus and how they're doing. Are they growing? Are they stagnant? You know, that sort of thing. So if we could expand this out to all of those areas, I'd appreciate it.
We can do that.
And I would just add to that, there wasn't so long ago, I think, not sure if under Dr. Dunlap's administration, maybe prior to that, we finally turned that ship around with our workforce training, and it became self-sufficient, and now it sounds like it's better than self-sufficient. So that's great news. Any other questions for Grayden or Diana? All right, thank you. That takes us to the Board Chair report. I had questions under my report, not so much to speak about, ask about. Chris isn't here, but at our December meeting, he mentioned that the joint used building that we have officially named Bob and Leona DiArmond Building with a secondary name coming, that would be open in April, and, or completed in April, opening in June. So a couple of questions for whoever. The second naming process with our partners, where are we at with that? And then if it's going to open in June, could we maybe get on our calendars before everybody leaves, whether we would have an open house, or how will that work? Looks like you're it, Laura.
Good evening, Chair Wood, and trustees, President. I can answer the second part, as several of us toured the building just the other day, and we're also working on a story tour, a visual story tour, to help share the history, the rich history of the land, and to honor the donation and the family. It's my understanding, and I do not believe that Rayo is here this evening, but the foundation is working with the trust of that family of bringing some representatives later this summer for a more formal ribbon-cutting
That's correct.
Great.
Process, and I believe we're looking at July or August, is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay.
So if I could, so the first part of the question is just a matter of us getting, narrowing down the choices and bringing that to the board and getting that approval. We're certainly communicating and working with our other partners about that functional name of the building. The other part of that is there will be, the building actually opens, it will soft-open summer, slate spring, but it will actually programmatically be open for the fall. So there will be a formal ribbon cutting, I don't have a date on that yet, but I know it is coming prior to that time, and it'll be a big celebration and...
We will all be there.
You'll all be there.
Okay, all right. The only other thing under my report was just, I hope everybody's going to enjoy this spring break, well deserved. Nobody's really here, so I assume they are. And then remarks for the good of the order. Trustee Howard?
I have two items. One is, I've had a couple of phone calls, inquiries about NIC's policies and about use of NIC facilities, Boswell Hall and that sort of thing. And it seems like it might be a good time to invite some members of the public and to make comment under our public comment conditions of three to five minutes, and listen to what they have to say, because I understand there's a review going on with regard to the use of our facilities, and that the public's comments about any frustrations they might have had, or good experiences they've had with regard to our policies, might help formulate the policies in the future. And so I was going to hopefully that we could put that on an agenda item, maybe for next month or the month after. I don't think there's any rush on it, so whenever the agenda's not real crowded, because I think we may have several people come in and have some comments, but that might help us in establishing a policy in the future.
Okay. So you're just looking for the public to have an opportunity to speak to the policy?
Well, right. I want to have it on our agenda so that they can speak, because otherwise they can't speak to it. And we can invite some people if they want to come in, and if they don't, then we proceed with the information we have.
Right, right. I know that Dr. McLennan's been working very hard on that policy, procedures more. Policy doesn't, well, we don't anticipate changing, but procedures. So, all right, well, we'll keep that in mind for a future agenda.
And I have one other comment. I had, I've reported to this, to the college about this concept of education in lieu of incarceration that the community colleges have sort of undertaken, and we're doing it now in conjunction with the Criminal Justice Committee. And Jeff Fox at CSI called and asked me if I would come down to Twin Falls and address the City Club of Southern Idaho, who are having meetings with regard, they're talking about building a new prison and whether they really need that, or maybe they should have other programs in order to address growing prison population. So I'm, an opportunity to go down and talk about this concept of using education in lieu of incarceration as part of problem-solving for the overcrowding problems that they're having. So I just thought I'd let everybody know that.
Well, I've been wanting to talk with you about that, and certainly publicly in the meeting. You've been working really hard on this initiative, you and a number of other people in the legal profession and the criminal justice profession. And I want to offer my full support, I'd like to see this board and this college get 100% behind that initiative. It's much, very similar to the juvenile diversion program, you're just working with adults. And I don't know, we as a society can decide if we want to spend our money on incarceration or if we want to rehabilitate people and let them get on with their lives and be productive citizens. And so I hope through your work that this college gets to launch the pilot program.
Well, right now, the status of it is, it's still, there is a small committee that's comprised of the Director of Prisons, the Director of Juvenile Justice, a member of the Supreme Court, the administrative head of the Supreme Court, and myself. And we're talking about trying to get together a working committee to start to establish, actually, the programming and the fundamentals of it. So as soon as there's something of substance to talk about rather than just conceptual, I'll be, believe me, I'll bring it back here, but my approach has been trying to offer NIC as the programs cite us, if we decide to do this for a year or two to see how it will work out. So we'll see how that works out.
That's great. Thank you for your efforts on that. Any other comments? Trustee Murray?
Just a follow-up regarding ACCT. They had a call for presenters, I shared that with you, and I think I heard something about Trustee Banducci in there, and Grayden Stanley, but...
Actually, there's a draft copy of what's been prepared by our instructors, and I happen to have a copy of one of the previews.
And this is for the fall?
For the fall in San Francisco in October.
Right.
What's the topic?
Well, this one says, addressing the needs of unique student populations. The part of the, one of the focuses of this is going to be about the e-learning and the eBooks, part of the, it was developed by a couple of our instructors, working with McGraw-Hill.
Fantastic.
That's part of it.
Great.
It is in process, and we are working on it. In fact, I have the instructor's biography here that I intend to nominate for Teacher of the Year.
Wonderful.
So we're working on that package jointly. So I have a, there's two different, a submission and a, submission for paper and presentation, and then secondly, then there'll be a submission for, it's actually for Regional Teacher of the Year for the Pacific Region, and then the winners of the regions are automatically forwarded for the national honor.
That's wonderful. Good. Should come from NIC. Trustee Dunlap?
Todd, once the, once you finalized, or the instructor has finalized the presentation for submission, can you then send that out so the rest of us can see that?
Oh, absolutely. It's a working copy right now, that's why I wasn't comfortable. I brought it with me tonight, thought maybe an opportunity to present itself, I might show it off a little bit, but...
Good.
Anyway.
And Trustee Dunlap, did you want to talk about your recent ACCT?
I can. I attended a conference on campus security at a Governance Leadership Institute sponsored by ACCT, and I'll just cover the topics that were presented there briefly. The first major topic was organizational resilience and what that means, and the case study that was used was the shooting on the Umpqua campus. Because colleges and universities prepare at times very well for these catastrophes, but where they fall down a lot is in the recovery phase after the emergency responders go home, the press goes home, and then reconfiguring the institution to get back to normal processes. And so that was a very good presentation. And what ended up happening at that institution, because the president was new, the board chair pretty much led the initial response, but because nine individuals were killed, the entire campus was absolutely stunned. And so Mary, I mean, double-check your name here, from Lane Community College, Mary Spildy, and her team came over from Lane Community College and shadowed the team from Umpqua Community College to help them and alleviate the stress and workload during the response to that. And the recommendation was that we should probably have a letter of agreement with some organization that would come in and help us out in terms of an emergency. The other topics, one was on behavioral intervention teams, another was on the power of network strategic doing and being change-ready. We also had a presentation by a survivor from Virginia Tech. She had been shot three times at Virginia Tech, and talked about how the institution went about recovering from that. And then there was a presentation about the design process, that as you're building new facilities, you can design into those facilities safeguards that make for a safer We also talked about trauma and sexual assault investigation and adjudication process related significantly with the Title IX processes. We also talked about guns on campus, not whether you were in favor of it or against it, but on policy development and how you dealt with that. And there were some examples where institutions went through a process in terms of developing a policy for that. Let's see, and then there was a, there were two other topics. One was on case studies on confronting national disasters, and that related to firsthand experiences with hurricanes, fires, floods, and earthquakes. Fortunately, we live in an area that is not particularly prone to those types of natural disasters, but it was fascinating to listen to those campuses talk about how they went through the process to support their community during those disasters, and then the recovery process to bring their campus back up to speed. And then lastly, there was a discussion about cybersecurity. And I can resend out the website for all of the presentations for that, because at the time of the conference, those presentations were not posted on the website, and so I'll send that back out probably to Grayden and probably Laura and Alex, and then I could send it to all of us as well. But it was a very good conference, and there were some very good lessons learned. There's a lot of areas that we are really up to speed on, but there's a couple areas probably related to recovery in terms of how we go about recovering from a catastrophe or natural disaster that we may be a little weak on.
Well, you know, that would have been a great conference to go to, I'm glad you went. I've had a lot of that training separately, not all together like that over the years. I think for the recovery portion, I know that we send out our services, I know that we've helped K-12. I don't know what we have coming back if we needed, I don't know that we've even decided we needed help, which we would. So maybe that's a great food for thought, and you can all discuss, how do we get there? Because we hopefully won't need it, but we should have it in place. So excellent, thank you very much. Any other comments, Board?
Chair Wood?
Yes.
If I may, I'd love to leave us with two last stories to celebrate here, and it happens to do with our students. One of them in our presence tonight, our student body president, Peter, neglected to tell you that for the rest of his spring break, he'll be leaving for New York City to attend a Circle of Change leadership program. It's the first time we've had a student attend that conference. Peter is only slightly excited about going to New York City, and we really look forward to him attending, participating with students from around the nation, and then bringing back that information. So I want to celebrate Peter for that. Also, the next piece of news involves Peter as well. We just recently found out that two of our students were selected to receive the President's Civic Awards. President McLennan has been involved in Campus Compact that we'll tell you more about in the future, but it allows us the opportunity to have students selected to receive recognition for their civic engagement. We have two that will be receiving that. One is Peter, because of the work he's done, particularly with the Truth Initiative that has to do with the tobacco-free policy on our campus, and then Paige Zeller, who's the president of our Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. Paige has done some work, particularly with suicide intervention and sponsoring QPR trainings here on our campus, some outstanding work needed in our community. Both of them were selected, will be joining President McLennan in the awards ceremony in the middle of April to receive their recognition, along with other students from the state of Washington, none others from the state of Idaho. So appreciate the president's leadership on that, but then want to congratulate most of all those students, Peter and Paige, who you'll meet next month. Part of our celebration is talking about our PTK chapter, who have done some incredible things this past year. You'll be so proud to hear from them next month.
We're always so proud of them. They're natural-born leaders, aren't they? Wonderful. Well, we're going to recess into executive session, and so I need a motion for that. Do I have a motion?
I move that we adjourn into executive session.
Adjourn, all right. I'll take that adjournment. Do I have a second?
We're going to make a motion to go into executive session under Article 74. Under article 74. I have it in front of me right now, but what is the?
Personnel.
Personnel, okay. So that would be the motion.
Our great-looking photo.
Okay. So I have a motion of what he said. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right.
We got to need a roll call, so trustee Murray?
Here.
Yes?
Yes.
Trustee. Yes.
You're not asking, but we're saying yes.
Okay.
Trustee Howard, trustee Wood, yes?
And Banducci.
Trustee Banducci.
Yes. Okay, sorry.
All right. Thank you. We will, we will move to executive session. Thank you all.